Okay, calling the meeting to order. This is this meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being videotaped at RMLD's office at 230 Ash Street, Reading, Massachusetts, for distribution to the community television stations in Reading, North Reading, Wilmington, and Linfield. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda as well as items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It's the role of the Chair to maintain order and all public comment or ensuing discussion. All right, we have Jason Small from the Citizens Advisory Board, welcome Jason.
Welcome, Jason.
And we also have Dave Talbert, Secretary. Thank you. And let's see if we have any public comment. Doesn't look like we have any public comment. But I do have a comment. I want to make a recognition of somebody that's leaving our organization. It's a very bittersweet day here at RMLD because Jane Parento is somebody we all love working with. She's the Director of Integrated Services and she's a real power broker, for real. And started at, started 26 years ago as an energy analyst here. And we really enjoy working with you, Jane, and we're going to miss you as you go and take over the General Manager job in Holden, right? And we'll miss your humor.
Yeah. Ditto, thank you Jane for your always very cooperative and supportive and you have a good sense of humor which is critical to be in any job.
That's right, especially working with this group here.
It's true.
And you're a great ambassador for the RMLD brand with all the stakeholders, so we'll miss you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have some approval of Board Minutes. We have a motion on this one.
A move that the Board approved the meeting minutes of July 19, 2018, and September 20, 2018, on the recommendation of the General Manager.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries, 400. And report on the Citizens Advisory Board meeting on October 9th. Mr. Stempak?
Yes, it was a great meeting. I think there were excellent questions by the CAV on both the capital and the operating budget, and which was approved, both which were approved, we'll see here later tonight. There's so much information, especially in the sort of capital budget, that it was sometimes the question was whether it could have been formatted slightly differently, and I think we're probably going to see that here tonight, are we not, I mean, yet, so. But there's just so much to do involved in the capital budget that I think they were correct in questioning exactly that.
Great, good. Jason, if you were there, do you want to make any comments at all?
I think John covered it.
He covered it, all right. He usually does. He's, oh, John, you're next on the agenda too. He smothers it. You're next on the agenda here, Verizon and AT&amp;T. It says, "Ask Mr. Stempak about that."
Oh, this was really a question that I had seen in the paper about Verizon, AT&amp;T, and other carriers, and hopefully we can just keep this relatively short here in terms of at least raising it for a topic and maybe use it for discussion at some point in the future. That as we move in from 4G into 5G, which is a transmission, short-distance transmission that Verizon, AT&amp;T, and other carriers are looking at to basically put mini cell towers on every telephone pole. I mean, that's what it amounts to. And so the question is, how much might we realize from the rental of at least our poles relative to Verizon's poles within our territory? And I believe, Colleen, you've mentioned in the past that that may be a set fee. Well, indeed, it said, at least in the newspaper article, that it would be a set small fee as opposed to what, say, Boston is realizing, which is three to five times what that fee is. So the question becomes, can we realize more fee for rental of our space on our telephone poles? And I don't mean to seek an answer to that tonight, but I think it's a very valid question because I think the 5G is coming on as much faster than we ever thought. And I think it is going to be implemented by all the various carriers. So it's in our financial best interest to see what we might be able to obtain from that rental space. That was basically the question.
Who sets the rates, like the ones in Boston? Who's the one that's...
The DPU. Oh, Colleen, would you care?
So the question comes down as to whether or not wireless is considered a utility, right? So Comcast is a utility, and it is state mandated what the calculation has to be. So you can't just set the attachment fee. So because we own the pole 50/50 with Verizon, we split the set rental fee depending on what set area is in. So when wireless, if it was to become a utility, so those people who were able to secure, whether it's true 5G or not, were able to rent out their poles at a negotiated price. But as soon as they say, okay, this is a utility, a wireless antenna is a utility, then it becomes a set attachment fee. So we have some legal information on that that I can send along. It's brand new as far as a discussion is concerned, so I haven't even gone through all the paperwork myself. But there's a lot of other questions, like if you have those up there, who works on them?
Right.
You know, because now you're on the other side of the high-energy primaries, you know, so you have to have rated people installing them or working on them. So there's a lot of questions that are still there that, you know, are we going to be doing work, service work for Verizon? I mean, you know, there's legal matters that have to do with providing services like that. So there's a lot of things that have to be answered before I think we can, you know, other than they're coming. And whether it's not so that you can continuously stream or whether it's going to support autonomous cars because the small cell only penetrates right underneath essentially the pole. So you go pole to pole to pole to pole, and you can have maybe up to five or six carriers at the top of one pole. So it's a lot. It's a lot of data that's going to be sent out for a number of reasons. So let me do a little bit more research and I'll provide you, you know, how we see it and what the impacts to the RMLD will be.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes.
Thanks for bringing that up, John and Colleen. It would be great to have a report maybe at the next meeting on what we're getting in terms of requests from the carriers. A couple of things to add to this, as you said, it may not be 5G, just densifying existing networks is what they need to do now. In addition to attaching, they'll need backhaul for the small cells, which means they're going to need fiber optic infrastructure. And some of them are leasing from Crown Castle, some of them are leasing directly from the municipals in some cases that I've heard about, so that's another piece of this. And although we may not be able to regulate what, that FCC ruling that you're referencing, John, the FCC wants to say that limit what we can charge for the attachment, that'll be litigated.
Right.
We'll see how that plays out. But either way, a municipal or other utility can regulate the technical sizing and standards and so forth, separate from the cost of...
The backhaul sounds very interesting though. I mean, that may be outside of...
What's the backhaul?
The data that we receive from the 5G, actually when you're probably broadcasting through the 5G as well as what you receive back, it has to go back someplace, right? I mean, you doesn't do it wirelessly. Typically, it gets collected at a server someplace which is served by a fiber optic cable that's coming in. We have fiber optic cables, so.
Yes, so each cell needs power and it needs a fiber strand to deliver the data to the radio on top of the pole that then gets distributed wirelessly to you.
Right.
So where does that come from? Maybe they have their own, maybe they lease it from Crown Castle, maybe they lease it from the municipal. There's a business play there. What it exactly looks like, you know, is what we should be thinking about.
We haven't had any formal requests as of yet.
For attachments at all?
No. Correct me, no formal attachment requests, correct?
We haven't received any.
No.
But one of the concerns that I have operationally...
So one of the concerns that I have operationally is that, you know, well, if they're going to put these radios in the municipal range because we have the poles broken down to electric and municipality, and also the communication zone, I mean, that could involve some safety, operational safety issues or create some operational safety issues. So generally, we would like them to set their own dedicated pole, and we provide service to them so they don't interfere with our operations. Or, you know, if they want to go up all the way to the top of the pole, which usually, you know, the higher, you know, the 5G and 6G or 7G as they come in, they need direct line of sight, that means they're going to have to go higher.
Right.
And that's going to create some problems because if they get into the primary zone, the 13,800 volts, now anytime, you know, we want to operate and we're going to have to, you know, if they want to maintain that, we're going to have to shut down the line, basically, for them to operate. So that's why we would prefer them to have their own dedicated pole so we don't, they don't have to interfere with our...
But that would mean two poles, potentially side by side, right?
That could mean two poles, right. But, you know, with this 5G, they're not, they don't have, it's not like, you know, they're going to have to install these units every other pole. So I'm sure when they do the radio study, the entire area coverage, maybe in other area, it's not more than like 20 or 30.
Once every 20 or 30 pole?
No, it could be because we just did a radio study for our own, you know, with the 5.6 megahertz and also the 900 megahertz for our smart grid devices. And I believe the report that came back, it was like, you know, like about 20, 28 to 30 radios overall, system-wide. So they have to do their own radio study, radio propagation, and see how many of these units they do, they need, but it's not like, you know, they need 100 or 200 of these. And depending on the site and where they need to be exactly, that's another factor.
Right.
So there should be a study, really, there should be a comprehensive study, and then they're going to have to look at other radio study, just making sure that, you know, we don't, we don't have interest in the same location exactly for our own purposes. So there should be, like what Colleen said, the study and also cooperation.
Certainly towns like Reading will have to be concerned about the aesthetics of multiple poles and whatnot, too.
I'm concerned with, what Hameed is saying is correct, but if you have times 20 carriers, you know, Verizon, Mobil, now you're talking about every pole.
Yeah, that's right.
And, you know, installing new poles, I mean, that's what I'm saying. We need to look at it and then, you know, let you know the impact. We also have frequency impacts that could affect our switches. I mean, we're using radio frequencies too, so we want all the baby monitors hitting each other, you know what I mean? So we have a lot of things that we have to look at.
Good analogy, I like that, Colleen.
Thank you, thank you.
Always pull at least one of those out for a board meeting.
Everybody always goes, "I get it, yeah, I get it."
That's good, I get that.
Great, thank you.
All right, good. So I think we're ready for the capital budget. I think you're staying there. Don't go anywhere, Hameed!
Okay, that's the little spreadsheet.
The legal, the legal document, legal size document?
It's not legal, this is...
Oh, it's bigger than legal.
Did you want to mention that we're delaying this one item, though?
Oh, yeah, we're going out of order for anybody tracking our agenda closely. Number seven is going to go towards the end when Phil Pacino gets back. Thank you, I was going to, I meant to mention that, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, presenting the five years capital authorization project budget. Basically, you'll be approving the budget for CY19, also the first half of the, the second half of the year of 2018, which is the first half of the FY19, which is July 2018 through December 2018. So you see the column on the left, the first column is the FY19 budget, which was already approved. The second column is from July to December, the estimate, and the third column is the CY19 plan estimate. And the rest of the columns from CY20 to '24, these are the estimates, you know, for the projects that they have multiple years and are ongoing, and so they need the fund to be appropriated. Also, on the very first column on the left, you see the line numbers and the next page numbers, which they correspond to the book that you have, that you could, you know, correlate that if you need more information. You could see the capital project cost sheet in back of each project. On the face, you see, they explain that, you know, what the purpose of the project is, the intention, and what it entails, how many years it takes to, you know, from the start to finish. And in the back, you have the cost sheet associated with it, which says the design, engineering, labor, materials, whatever that, you know, is associated with that particular project. So I'm going to be covering, basically explaining those projects that you see that they got grid lines on them, the blue on CY19. And if you have questions on the rest of the budget, I'd be more than happy to go over that with you, but these are basically the highlights. So the first one is line number one on page 11 of your book. That's the RMLD LED upgrade program. This is up to upgrade the Ashes Street and as well as the other facilities, the substations with new interior, exterior LED fixtures. So that's going to cost approximately $200,000. So that's what the, that's a price for engineering, design, and materials, and installation, basically. That's what it entails. The next one is line number three or page 13. It's a parking lot upgrade, 230 Ashes Street. This is to reconfigure the parking lot at 230 Ashes Street in order to make accommodations for the EV chargers. We already installed one, so this is to reconfigure in order to be able to add more EV chargers. And that is going to cost approximately $230,000. The next one is line number four on your spreadsheet, or page 15, which is building upgrades that includes the 230 Ashes Street lobby installation, station 4 AC and OSHA compliance study. As you know, we just recently did the OSHA study, and it's audit, self-audit, and we basically, it was good. They said, you know, well, we are right on track. There are some minor issues, some minor stuff that needs to be taken care of, that, you know, we need to appropriate some money. Part of that money is going to be paying for that. So it's a two, it's a, the cost of that would be $125,000.
Hameed, can I, I've noticed the following year, you expect a doubling almost of that cost.
Yeah, that's, that's not for, for OSHA, every year we put some money aside. However, in order to get to the, get to, in the station four, station 4 AC, we're not sure how much that's going to cost. That's one of the ideas that we have. We just have placeholder for it, just in case that, you know, we need to get, because that station is one of the older station after station five.
Okay.
And we need to do some structural work in order to probably accommodate that, so that's why.
Can I interrupt, Mr. Chairman? I think that the notes on the right-hand side is the entire project.
Right.
I think what you're trying to ask, and maybe Hameed can be a little bit more specific, is the 125 in CY19 is the lobby installation or the station 4 AC or the OSHA compliance?
Okay.
So...
That is basically station four...
Focus on this year.
Just focus on this year.
AC, yeah, for AC and the lobby installation. That's what entails.
So, thank you.
You're welcome. The next project is line item number eight, and that's page 25, for $60,000. That's for electric vehicle supply equipment, EVSE. And every year, you know, we, the plan is to install two electric charging stations per town in our service area. And this is what we are hoping we can get grants. Last year, we got a grant for $3,000 for one. And, you know, we're going to get the grant like $6,000, hopefully, you know, use the state grant in order to fund it. So that's why you see $60,000, you know, for going forward. The next project is line item number 10, page number 27. It's a battery storage unit at station three, $20,000. This is for that 5-megawatt battery storage plant that we're going to be installing at station three. The $20,000 is paying for some of the interconnection stuff that, you know, we need to do in order to connect it to our system, interconnection work. The next project is the grid modernization optimization. That's line item number 15 on page 36. And as you see, the grid optimization entails SCADA made switches, interruptors. These are the switches for fault detection, isolation, restoration as a part of the automation of the system. The SCADA upgrade, the capacitor bank automations, these are the units that we install for cap banks. The cap banks, the job that they do, basically, they reduce the foam on the beer, if you want to use that analogy, you know, if, the power factor, in order to correct the power factor. And the best analogy for that is beer and foam. So you want less foam and more beer, more liquid, right?
Better than the baby monitor analogy, I thought. You went up, Colleen, you sound...
That's right. That's right. So these are the foam reducers, basically, on the system, reducing the system losses. So we automate those, the units that we need in order to do that. And as you see, they are ongoing projects, every year we do a little bit. Then the next one is software integration because we still need to integrate the AMI with the SCADA made switches, with the outage management system and all of that integration. And usually, it's never going to be that easy and smooth, it's not the cookie cutter. So every piece that you add to the system, you need to do some software integration and making sure that they work properly. So for the switches, baby, I installed four switches, four SCADA made switches a year, that's how it's planned out, the 15-year program. The two interruptors, the SCADA upgrade, we've already done that, so the system is already, unless if they go for more upgrades, that we're going to ask for more money in the future years. The capacitor automation, $66,000, and the software integration, $14,000. So that is basically for that system portion of that. Then, as you know, we installed the new outage management system recently. It's, we're going through the testing. We are also installing the IVR, that's interactive voice response that they integrate with the outage management system. So as soon as, you know, the people, they decide which method of communication, texting, phone, or email, then the system is going to contact them via that, the option that they choose. And that's going to notify them that we know you're out and what the estimated registration time would be. So that's what that IVR is, basically. And also, we are...
Quick question, why would anybody choose home phone for that? Because obviously it won't work if the power's out, right?
Some people probably, they prefer that over, some people, they don't have cellphones and, you know, and we have to just, you know, give that, provide that option for the people if they choose to. I know most people, they have cellphones and, you know, they have emails, but, you know, or text, you know, if they, you know, but some people, they might have, you know, still the old phone systems.
Or if they have phone over Comcast or something like that, when power goes out, that's toast, too.
That's right.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
That's right. Or if they have generators, I don't know, if, you know, the backup system somehow, and they still want to be notified through the phone, that's the way to do that.
Okay.
So the system is capable of doing that, so we can use all those capabilities in order to be able to get back to the customers and give them more information about the outage. Another module that we're going to add, these outage management system has several modules that every year we try to add one more to that, that it's going to get us more closer and closer to the automation, system automation. And the next one is the crew management. And otherwise, during the system outages, we're going to be able to see that, you know, okay, the crew is on pole two Summer Street. And then the next one, that, you know, the next assignment is, let's say, on 22 Main Street. So we could see that, you know, right there, going without calling and without coming and, you know, that reduces the communication traffic to the control center. So that would be really a good package to have, so we know exactly when the crews, they get started, when they finish the job, and when the next assignment, so we can easily manage the outage restoration activity much more efficiently.
Hameed, if I may, just as a side question, in terms of outage management, do we have the ability to cause outages in certain areas if we want to selectively do that? I'm thinking of Lawrence and North Andover where they had the gas explosions, and obviously they shut off the power, but you don't want to shut off the power everywhere, you want to shut off where the gas lines are coming into the homes. Do we have that capability?
Very good question. Right now, we don't, no. But as soon as we have these switches that you are voting to approve...
What a good sentiment.
There you go. The more and more of those switches we have, yes.
Okay, great.
But right now, no. As soon as, that's why we're doing that automation. And, you know, and another way to do that really is by if the meters, they have the capability of shutting off, you know, but, you know, that, it's going to cost more money, you know. Every option is available, but at a price.
So are you saying that within a year, we'll have that ability?
No, that's, that's a 15-year project.
Okay.
I mean, we installing like about 100 switches, you know, and these switches, you know, are a little bit, you know, could cost, depending on the options that you go with, so we are going very, we're being very cautious on, you know, so it's not going to be any burden on the utility as well as, you know, obviously.
Maybe we can get the gas company to pay for that.
That's right, that's, that's what it is. But again, to answer your question, the more of these switches we have, we try to locate as these switches, they come up, we got a 15-year plan, we also got exact location of where we want these switches to be installed, so we have the automation and registration done in a most efficient and productive way. So as they come in, you know, we have them all prioritized, exactly when the next batch of switches, they're going to go, on the key locations.
And what are the key locations, how do you determine?
The key locations, the main feeders that they go on, usually at the beginning, we got the relay at the station, which is already, we've already taken that step of automation, so they can, you know, we can open, close them and join the network, like, you know, like the mesh network that, you know, they have a team of network, this is what it is, they call it intel team. Intel team, the switches, they talk to one another. And usually, along each feeder, you have two or three of these switches installed. So these switches, they're smart, they talk to each other through the radio or through the fiber network. And they, they're going to say, they check with each other the status, "Oh, I'm open, I'm closed." So they know, as soon as the fault goes right through them, they're going to say, "Oh, okay, I see a fault, I'm going to open up." And then it's going to send a message to the next switch down the line, "Open up." So we installed these on the main feeders, these are not on the laterals. So let's say, at the end of the circuit, the last switch, near the last switch, there is a problem. We can, from the office, we can open it up and kill that area manually, manually, or through the SCADA.
So to John's question, you'll be able to do it in big areas?
At the big areas, right.
And then over time, you'll be able to narrow?
That's right. And then the next step, obviously, there would be the laterals, the lateral taps.
Yeah.
And as you go and automate them, then you can open up the laterals. But right now, on the main feeder, which usually they're talking about between two switches, you've got about, you know, anywhere between 500 to 1,000 customers. So you're going to be able to do that.
Okay.
But you won't be able to do, let's say, 50 customers that are affected, then, you know, that would be kind of...
No, but I would, I would think that, in the gas example, it'd be a whole series, very well-defined.
That would, that would be. Like in Wilmington, we have most of these switches installed, so Wilmington would be a better shape. But that's because that's majority of overload, and it's industrial, so that we started there. And then we moving toward Reading, and we installed few in Linfield, and we have installed a few in North Reading, okay? And then, but majority are in the...
The big industrial areas, yeah.
But we're moving along, it's as we go along, depending on the feeder and the design and configuration, and how complicated it is, and, you know, how we need to support the load to, you know, during the registration process. So you have to think like a computer to say that, you know, okay, this is the logic, this is the order that I want to restore the system. And then that's how you determine which location is the key location for putting these switches up. So it's a pretty amazing system, so if, you know, if you are interested, I can show it to you at a later time.
Thank you.
To see that, you know, how automation works.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Okay, so that's for basically that portion. And then the next one, you see that in a power factor correction. So we spent the next module in CY20 for the power factor correction. So these cap banks, they're going to come on, off, online, whenever the system demands to reduce the foam. So that's basically to minimize the losses. So that's what you see. The next project is the new Wilmington substation, line number 16 on your spreadsheet, and that's page 43. We are negotiating with National Grid for the land that they have on Route 125. Actually, I just got a text from our rep, and they have prepared the letter of intent, so we should have it, they say, by October 31st, you know, because of the strike situation that is going on, the union contract. They're all working around the clock, and, you know, that kind of put us into, give us a delay. us a delay on that process. But they have agreed, definitely, the intent is to sell, sell the property, and that would be a perfect location for us, in order to build the new substation, as opposed to the previous location that we had in mind, and that's what it is.
Better access, right?
That, much better access, and shorter run, shorter getaways on Route one twenty-five, that we need to go toward Andover Street and going back toward the Route sixty-two and Wilmington. So, and Ballad Vale, that, which load is concentrated, basically, twenty megawatts a load. So, so that's what it is. I'm hoping that, you know, we can hopefully get, I doubt if this is going to be by end of the year closing, but we should have an agreement in place by end of the year, you know, if, depending on when we're going to get the PNS. If not, definitely going the first quarter of two thousand and nineteen, we should have this closed. All right, so, under that, you see that, you know, Wilmington substation construction and commissioning, that's sixty-nine thousand, this is for, this is the money that we're going to be paying for conceptual design of the substation getaways and permitting, which is going to total approximately for sixty-nine thousand dollars. And then, the majority of money for construction is going to come, it's going to be spent in CY twenty and CY twenty-one, which we potentially, we're going to go for bonding, you're going to see in the financials, that, you know, we're going to bond, yeah. Then, the next one is on number eighteen, line item number eighteen, page fifty-two, that's Route one twenty-five pole line installation for the new substations. You see that, you know, we are, right now, we're working, making preparations, engineering preparations for that, spending five thousand on CY nineteen, we're spending another five thousand for prep work, for prep work for the engineering services, and then, six hundred thirteen thousand in CY thirteen for the construction of the lines. These are the pole lines, because there is a section between Ballad Vale and Andover Street, that there is no pole line, what we're going to have to do, we're going to have to install more poles and get the risers ready for the substation when they build, so, because these getaways are the substations, thirteen eighth getaway, they come in on those poles. So, we make the preparation, so it follows right in line with the construction substation, and ready to pull the cables in order to build the line. So, the next page, you see that, you know, line item number twenty, page forty-five, it's a forced account mass DOT on Main Street and Hopkins Street in Reading, this is a placeholder, two twenty-five, again, we're getting reimbursed from the state on this. So, that's DOT project for widening the road. The next three, on line item twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, which is on page forty, fifty-four, fifty-six, and fifty-eight, you see that these are the new, these are the new projects that are added. The underground line extension on Marion Street, you know, this is what we need to extend the line, two thousand fifty feet on Marion Street. Right now, there is a single phase going through that area, and they're like about fifty acres of land, and possibly, they're going to be twenty-five to fifty houses, more houses built, and you have to extend the two phases. That's, that Marion Street is right in between Route thirty-eight and Route sixty-two, on Salem Street and Route thirty-eight. So, this is a huge area, and the load, we see that it's concentrating, so we need to extend the lines in-
So, is that mostly residential?
Residential, yes, these are the houses.
If we're industrial, you put, what, three phases in?
Industrial, definitely three phases.
Yeah.
But residential, depending on the number of residentials and the load, these houses, they're humongous. We're talking about, you know, fifty houses, fifty to seventy-five houses, each one of them, they've got like seven kilowatts, you know, demand, or, you know, yeah, seven, you know, seven thousand kilowatts, or seven hundred kilowatts, I'm sorry. So, so, we need definitely the third phase, two, three phases, in order to distribute it evenly among the, you know, the phases, otherwise, one phase is going to go up, and you know, it's not a good thing to rely on only one phase, especially for the registrations. So, the next one is five W five Andover Street Road upgrade in Wilmington. There is a thousand feet of open wire that, you know, on that road, that it's, every year, it's giving us hard time, trouble. With the trees and everything, if the branch comes down, it takes the entire area out, and we detected that through the SAFI and SADI and KD numbers, that, you know, we monitor, and we continuously tracking those to see where are the trouble spots, and we decided to upgrade that to the Hendrix, to the diamond-shaped construction, the cables that you see, this is the most reliable system. So, we're going to replace that and upgrade it, that's going to be eighty-nine thousand dollars. The next line is two eleven five oh three and two eleven five oh four fiber line extension to Substation Four. National Grid, they are, they're trying to connect the two eleven station and Woburn, and go all the way to Tewksbury. So, we are right in the middle, and in order to communicate with their SCADA, they need to beef up the line. So, in order to beef up the line, we also, they need to go through our substation and going back up, and also, the radial tap of the fiber communication to our substation, so they connect our station load and our station data into their system, SCADA system. So, the price that they gave us was really high. So, we decided to do it on our own, so we can go through the bidding process and see that, you know, maybe we save more money that way. So, that's why we decided to say that, you know, okay, we're going to do it ourselves, we achieve the goal, and we get it done, but we do it our way, not, you know, what you want to charge us.
So, just to make sure I understand, they need the fiber optic to connect to their system, but they're charging us?
Well, actually, no, that's a very good question. This is, this is actually per NERC requirement, as well as the NPCC, okay? So, we are mandated, an ISO requirement. They need to monitor in order to manage the load on one fifteen KV loop, they need to see how much load the Reading is drawing, and how much load is coming in and going out. So, all of that data needs to be, you know, monitored for their system reliability, and we need to, we're obligated to do this.
So, it's our cost to basically put it in?
That's right, our cost to put it in. And, you know, it's nice, you know, that's something that, you know, for the overall area, regional reliability, their NERC, NPCC, is, you know, asking a new one on ISO, they want to know. Because when they call for, let's say, five percent voltage reduction, or when they call for load shedding, they want to know that actually, the load has gone down, and you know, immediately, they need, in order to make the decisions how to manage the load, system load on one fifteen KV. So, that's why we're doing, they're doing it. Okay, the next projects, you see the next three projects, line item number twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, these are the getaways out of the Station Four. Part of the problem that, if you recall, both an associates, they detected, they said that, you know, all of these, all of these cables that jammed into eight duct bank, and they're all, every, every conduit is filled, and the heat builds up. As the heat builds up, it builds more resistance, it's going to drop the ampacity rating of the cable. So, in order to raise that and bring it up to what it should be, we have either, we need to take some of those out of the duct bank, and, or build a new duct bank, so, which is going to be very costly and expensive. So, we did, our engineers, they came up with a very creative way to take two of those lines out of the underground and put them on overhead, directly out of the station, without impacting the underground duct bank, and improve the rating, reduce the heat. And that's a four W five, four W twelve getaway improvement for hundred seventeen thousand dollars. We're going to start the work, part of it in FY nineteen, I mean, from, until December, one forty-two and one hundred seventeen thousand in CY nineteen. That's going to increase, actually, increase the distribution capacity by twenty megawatts, which is good, and also, the rating of the cables, which right now, we can load them up more than three hundred sixty amps, that's going to bring it up to close to four hundred by doing that, which is win-win situation for us, and you know, achieving all of those line items that, you know, they wanted to replace the underground getaways, two thousand MCM, or double line, double up the line, to cut down the resistance and increase the ampacity, which would have cost us, you know, over two million dollars in order to do that. So, this way, it's much easier to do that, and you know, we only need to replace maybe one line from seven fifty MCM to two thousand MCM, as opposed to double up the line, and we don't have the doctor in the room to do that anyway. So, you need to build up another duct bank, which is going to be very, very costly. So, this is really great savings for us. The total project, this total project for between FY nineteen and FY, and CY nineteen, it's going to cost two hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars total, as opposed to spending, spending a million dollars for a new duct bank. Also, hundred fifty-seven thousand for four W six, and two hundred six thousand for four W sixteen, in order to upgrade the cables, which these cables are old anyway, they need to be upgraded, to seven fifty MCM copper, and you know, that's going to increase the ratings even more, which is really great. This is good, this is definitely, I feel very confident about, you know, spending this kind of money in order to, for the system to benefit, especially Station Four, which is the older, after Station Five, is the older between three and four, than four, older substation. So, we gained a lot, we get more, more for what we spend. The next one is line item number thirty-three, AMI mesh network expansion, meter replacement for three hundred thousand dollars, you see that, that's a continuing expenditures until two thousand twenty-four, because what we do, we've got a number of meters, as you all been hearing, on the outage management system, we've got some meters that, you know, they don't have the capability, the Itron meters, that's why we expanded the mesh network in Eaton, the new system. They don't have the capability of reporting the last gasp to the outage management system, it's because, you know, they don't have the multi-earth module, that, you know, we can just replace that module with the Eaton module to make them to join the mesh network. So, we have to replace the meter. You've got about thirty-six hundred meters between residential, commercials, and you know, and industrial, that they're not going to be able to report back to the outage management system. So, we need to spend the money now for two reasons. Number one, bring more strength to the mesh network, that, you know, the true mesh, two-way communication, between the meter and the outage management system and SCADA, and also replace the meters. So, part of that money, you see that being spent to install the relays, that they can relay the, you know, the messages to the, and join, and bring more strength to the backbone of the mesh network, and also, replacing the meters that we need to do in order to, again, strengthen the mesh network, as well as solve some of that problem that, you know, we have right now, which we, the only solution to that would be to replace them all. It's going to cost about two million dollars, and, you know, we spread them over six years, so we should be able to manage that.
Is there any market for used meters? I mean, maybe not here-
Not for the ones that we have.
Maybe offshore, someplace.
Could maybe, I don't know, maybe what we do, once we take the meters out of the service, we put them on the shelf for six months, just in case there is any discrepancies, and any problems with them, and then, we go through them, you know, we sell them through the bidding process. So, everybody in the, in the US, they're going to be notified that we got these meters, anybody interested? But usually, you know, because, you know, the life of those meters are not more than, you know, eight to ten years, and so, they're all technology, they don't have any values.
Scrap metal, yeah.
Yeah. But still, we go through our, you know, bidding process for that, even though those are scraps, so, we do that. All right, so that's, that's for that project, and I guess the last two projects on sheet number three, you see the line item number forty-seven, that's a Woburn Street Wilmington, between West Street and Concord Street. And this upgrade was really needed in order to bring the ampacity of the feeder in that area, and meet the National Electric Safety Code clearances, because that area was, like, we had like two circuits on toothpicks, basically, and it was bad. So, we needed to upgrade them, we set new poles, and you know, the engineers, they did a great job for pole loading calculations, as well as the design that was done, and now that I feel confident about that, that area, and that's a main drag in order to send the load toward Wilmington, and you know, relay the load between Reading and Wilmington, and you know, that, that is a good, definitely, it was a good move to make, in order to make the improvements, reliability, for reliability reasons. Also, project number forty-eight, that's one fifteen KV transmission line pole upgrade, we did one pole in FY eighteen, one, one line, the two eleven five oh three line. As you recall, every year, we test the poles, ten percent of pole system-wise, you know, we test them. The poles that owned by us, in our custodial area, which is like about sixty-five hundred, we usually test between, anywhere between sixty-six fifty to seven hundred poles. And that showed, actually, these lines, the both lines, that they, some of the poles failed. So, because these are the main feed to the Substation Four, so we decided, we said, we're not taking any chances, we just want to upgrade them all, make sure everything is intact, and the system reliability is to the best it can be. So, we did one line in FY eighteen, and the second line's being done next week. The contractor, actually, it's there now, they're setting poles, and they're going to be pulling wires and getting that done next week. And once we get that done, then we are done with the two incoming lines from the ever source, which is going to be the most reliable. And basically, that concludes my presentation. For the CY nineteen, we are asking seven million eight hundred and four thousand dollars to spend to do all of those good projects that I explained to you.
All right, thank you, Hamed, for that great presentation.
Thank you.
Just as an aside question, and you know, I'd like to, just very short, Verizon owns half the poles on our territory.
More, we've got about sixteen thousand eight hundred poles, and Verizon owns like about ten thousand.
Right. And do they have their own crews, crews testing their poles, or not?
They're not.
So, they're not, so we've gotten really good at testing poles, right?
Yes.
That's one of our core competencies, as far as I can tell.
Exactly.
Is there any way we could sell that as a service to Verizon, for their poles, especially when they're going to be using 5G? So, I mean, shaking her head, going, no.
We already asked, it's a union issue.
So, they're, they're not interested?
We can test them for, you know, for safety if we want to, and it's not ownership, it's custodial, each pole is owned fifty-fifty, so they have more custodial than we do, but from a union standpoint, we can't just perform that service for them, we certainly can-
So, we own fifty percent of the pole, and they own fifty percent of the pole?
Yes.
Yeah, fifty percent.
Each pole.
Ownership is fifty, yeah.
Each pole in their territory?
That's right.
There's custodial areas, all the poles are owned by Verizon and RMLD together, each pole, fifty-fifty.
Because the maps we saw before were very differentiated, that-
That's custodial area.
Custodial.
So, just because you own it, you split, who's going to take care of the inside of the house, and who's going to mow the lawn, you know what I mean? You've got it split, so-
They don't mow the lawn, though.
They don't mow the lawn.
No.
Yeah.
No, they do maintenance, but they're, you know, their inspection is quite different from our inspection. If they happen to have a work order on that pole, they'll take a look at it, but we're doing, you know, osmosis, we're doing, you know, density-
I'm just thinking of it in terms of reference to the first thing we talked about, which was, if they are going to move into 5G and need all these other additions to it, is there an opportunity for us to upsell our services to them?
Well, you know, Verizon had come in, we talked about that, and then, that discussion kind of went away, probably, and it happened in a couple of communities, but then, the discussion stopped here, because when the 5G was going to go in, they probably said, hmm, maybe we shouldn't be selling this asset. So, that, I don't know if that's the reason, but it certainly makes sense.
That makes sense. We should have bought those poles.
Why?
We should have bought those falls. I'm only kidding.
Depends which half we own, the top or the bottom.
Yeah, that's right, thanks, Tom.
Other questions for Hamed?
That's all right, that's fine. But you know, during the construction, if we are doing construction in their custodial area, that we need to, you know, upgrade, and if we feel like, you know, that the pole is not going to make it, because every single pole is being analyzed with the pole form and for pole loading, and if it's not going to support it, or there's a problem with it, we ask them to replace it, if they're not testing it, you know, so.
And they comply.
And they comply.
Excellent.
They have to.
Good, thank you.
David?
So, this is, and I just wanted, the last part of the, you see that in financials, you see that, you know, we're going for bond for one point two million in CY twenty for Wilmington Substation, and three point three million, or three million three hundred thousand dollars in CY twenty. And you see that, you know, for the forced account mass DOT, we getting reimbursing, we being reimbursed for two hundred twenty-five thousand. So, and there those, the other items, you see, electric vehicle EVSE, that, you know, six thousand dollars, that we're hoping we can get from- that we're hoping we can get from the state to fund the charging stations. So basically, that's what it is. That's how we fund the money. And also we transferring money from the operating funds, obviously, you know. The combination of operating funds and also these bond proceedings and the, the money that we get from the state reimbursement. And the state, you know, these are all where the money is coming from that you see.
Are we doing the bonding ourselves or are we working through the town?
No, we're, we're not absolutely sure we're bonding yet. This, these are just placeholders. But we're going in April to discuss the purchase of the land and will request for the bond so that we can get that done. And then the bonding may or may not occur the following year, but you still have to go to a town meeting. So we want to get that over with and we'll provide a bond schedule. And we just met with bond council. So we've got all the, everything that we're supposed to put together in order to submit on time, so.
Thank you.
So this, I'm sorry, go ahead. Do you have questions?
Well, when, when you're done.
Yeah, this is, this is, I'm done.
You're done.
I'm waiting for the vote.
Well, I mean, all this is fantastic. My, my question is, is more about a couple of things at the beginning about our, our actual building site, the parking lot investments, the building. Those are the things that I just want to, you know, what are those and why do we need to do, you know, quarter of a million on the parking lot? Those seem like the kind of things that maybe we could take in, you know, what are, what are our action points on those? I have never seen a, an image of the design, why we're doing it. I may have missed it.
I think we had talked about that at one of the meetings and about doing the parking lot out here. And I can tell you tonight it was completely full out here and I almost ripped my bumper off. So I'm all for it.
Sure.
The parking lot has to be regraded anyways and right now, you know, you know, half of the potential lot is gravel and you can't park in it. So the design is, is kind of like a feather. You know, you, you pull in, you pull out, and then we're putting the charging stations there. So when we had that conversation, I think it was back when we were talking about the charging station. So we have to regrade the parking lot anyways and resurface it, you know, it fills up with water. So it was better to just lay it out differently so you're not pulling into a mouse maze and we would double the amount of spaces that we have.
Right. I guess. Have we seen the site plan for this at one of these meetings?
I don't know if we've seen the site plan, no.
So, I mean, I guess.
There's a design that there was done, you know, but it's not the final design. So we just going through that process of evaluation.
And then how many charging stations?
We have a double charging station out there. That is supposed to go in the front parking lot. That's where it's being relocated when the parking lot is fixed, correct.
It's not adding, it's just, you're relocating what's there now to a different spot.
Correct. Because that's the public one that we got the grant rebate on.
Why does it have to be relocated?
Well, we can leave that one there for, we, we have another one out back for our electric car. And, you know, because originally it was supposed to go in, in the customer parking lot. That's not a customer parking lot. We actually had to move the handicap down and that's where the town trucks park. So we're just making do for right now until we resurface.
So resurfacing that parking lot costs 230?
Well, we have, no, because the whole parking lot is going to move right up against the antique building.
Okay.
So that you can get all the spots.
I guess the reason I'm asking is that we've had a lot of conversations about how we can
Yes.
work with the town and what this site and the overall zone is going to be doing vis a vis redevelopment. And it just raises questions, I mean, it makes me wonder, well, how does this fit in with some larger plan? And, and if it does, and what is the larger plan? How does this quarter of a million fit in with a larger site review of this whole industrial zone? That's why I'm asking, you know.
Yeah, no, that makes, makes a lot of sense.
If there's a redevelopment happening in the next decade, I, I would say that, that would involve these pieces, this building, you know, that empty lot, which is the parking lot, the.
We, we just physically don't have enough parking.
Right.
Because we're not in full compliance of our security under NERC either. No one is supposed to be parking on the other side of the fence. So, and we don't own this driveway or anything out the back. It's all owned by a third party who allows us to park some of our cars there, but that's only on a temporary basis. So we just physically don't have enough spots in this building. So we are very careful that we're not spending any money on a building or anything like that that could be under an economic development type thing.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, if this site, if this is going to be redeveloped somehow in the next 10 years or 15 years even, to expect 250 to redo a parking lot when we don't know what the larger picture is, is what I'm raising.
Yeah, but 10 years is a lifetime. I mean, that 10 years, I mean, you know, I've, redevelopment, I mean, I, I've been old. I remember 10 years ago, the redevelopment committee going, yeah, we should be doing something here and nothing happened for a decade.
No, I know.
So I'm not sure we should wait another decade to improve our, our thing here. Besides which, we all want that old antique building to be a Starbucks, so.
Mr. Chair?
Seriously?
Yes, Meg. So I mean, I think the answer is somewhere in the middle or the left or right because I think 10 years, we probably wouldn't wait that long for a decision if we knew something was happening. But maybe the, really the question is, because the, the main focus tonight is approve of the budget. It sounds to me prudent to have that money in the budget. That doesn't mean it's going to be spent tomorrow.
Exactly.
And maybe what Dave is asking is if there's a designer, it may be useful to see what the layout looks like before they start digging up the parking lot and, because I think what you said, Colleen, I think when you see what it looks like, it may make a. The other reality is, I know from our own company, repaving, it's like roofs and repaving your, 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 it's, it's not like your driveway, it's a much bigger, they cost a lot of money. It's, you know, it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of.
I don't disagree.
What Dave's saying.
And Dave, if you know something from the redevelopment committee that's gone on in town, I'd love to hear it. I, I haven't seen anything, that's all.
It sounds like you bring up a good point, Tom. We'll have another chance to look at this before.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would say, let's keep them.
To be clear, I'm not suggesting any action about the budget here. I know we're, I mean, in the capital budget, yes, it'll go through, no question. But do we then have another moment to like, to approve or modify that, that line item? And what will that be? Or in, in approving this, does it just happen at the staff level?
Well, generally, when you approve things, it just happens. So if, if you want to say it's approved contingent on seeing the design, but you're asking for a design where I'm asking to do the design this year. So I can show you what the conceptual looks like. You actually approved the parking lot designed a couple of years ago. And what happened is when we hired the engineering company to come in, the drainage system was all, the whole thing was just a complete mess. You have load centers that are electrical boxes that go over to the old station.
Yep.
So the whole thing had to be redone, new drainage. If, if we read in, on the estimate, it says you have $10,000 on the engineering to develop the construction documents and then reconfigure customer parking lot, install new drainage system, asphalt curbing, striping and landscaping and install, you got to install the EV.
Okay. All right. So what you're saying is when we approve the budget, it, it'll just happen? There's not a further review or approval step for us to look at this? Yes or no?
Typically, when you approve the budget for that project, we don't stop and come back and get permission. But I, we can, you can do whatever you want.
Well, I guess, look, I guess, to me, it's like you're only looking at one little part. We don't know what the larger site usage might be, you know, in the next few or 10 or more years. What's going to happen to the, the building on the other side of Station One? What's going to happen to Station One? Is this building going to be reused? But we're going to spend a quarter of a million dollars on this little postage stamp. To me, it seems like we, we shouldn't until we know what the larger, if any, plan is of the, the site and the block and the buildings around it.
Well, that's, that's one, certainly one good thought.
Yeah.
And I think, but the flip side of that is that you make an improvement to the property, it's going to be valuable.
Yeah. I mean, we saw this happen in downtown Reading where somebody wanted a parking lot for a specific need that they thought they wanted. This was the bank, Sanborn Street, they fought like hell for 10, for a long time to get this. They got it on the argument that they needed it because they move out otherwise and they ended up moving their administrative offices anyway. Parking lot's going to get redeveloped. It was all this effort and hundreds of thousands of dollars and wasted time and effort to solve a problem that wasn't really a problem. So I, I watched that process at close range. I mean, I just, I, I'm skeptical of it. I guess that's all I'm saying.
I'm concerned about, you know, repairing the entire roof. I mean, we've been waiting five years for some kind of economic development and, you know, I committed to the board that we would only address major maintenance. But we, you know, the, the ceiling is leaking in everyone's office.
Yeah, I mean, roofs is, is, this is not a roof.
No, but they're very expensive and, and if you may tear this building down under an economic development, we certainly don't want to even do that. So.
I think the analogy isn't quite, this isn't, doesn't quite fit, but I, I've made my, I've said my, my piece on it. I, I'd like to see wider engagement with the town. I'd like to know what the master plan is for this block before we spend a quarter million dollars on, on just a piece of, of a parking lot. I don't, I've never had a problem finding a space there. I don't know what the pressing need is for additional spaces on a day-to-day basis. If there's been a study or something on that that shows people lining up and parking on the street, I don't know.
I think we move on, need to move on to the vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, can I just, I mean, I, I think, and sometimes the answer is they don't know, in which case that's an answer too, right? But it might be worthwhile between now and, it doesn't sound like anything's going to happen the next 30 days or is it going in terms of?
Well, like I said, the parking lot was already approved a couple of budgets ago and, and, you know, we had to take it to the town and, and that particular design was okay, but it got rejected because it wasn't meeting the objective of a sufficient amount of spaces so that we would move our cars off of private property. So we needed more spaces. So it, it was redeveloped and we have a conceptual, but we haven't moved forward with anything.
I, I think we could approve the budget and then just ask for, as you're starting to move forward with that, just to, on whoever that month is, that board meeting, that you just bring back that to us?
Yeah, we can show to you. If you don't want to do it, we'll, we'll reasphalt it. We can have the facilities guy come in, he can talk about the drainage issues and all the things that, whether they can last 10 years or whatever.
Yeah. So I guess we're just asking, you're asking like, will you want to be involved in that process a little bit more?
A little, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and to know whether it, it plugs into anything else that's happening as far as a redevelopment or envision for redevelopment of the larger site, which we are a part.
Yeah, I mean, I think the other point to Dave's point is, because I think you're part of the some development committee, aren't you, Colleen?
Well, the economic development, development conceptuals that the MCAP.
Forget about that. That's a dead process.
Okay, but the, the drawings that they showed, nothing that I ever saw showed the historic building being ripped down. So this is just improving the parking lot right in front of that building. So since that's never going to get shut down and if it turns into condos or whatever it is.
Restaurant.
There's nothing with this, this parking lot that it would be impacted other than to serve and exist, you know, a building that's staying. So.
Yeah, unless, unless the, the site itself was to have some construction on it, the, what's now a parking lot, that, that sometimes happens. I mean, the, the lot that I mentioned on Sanborn Street is, is in fact going to be part of a, of a development project in the next few years connected to the post office.
Okay. Well, I guess we can vote and just that request that we're in dialogue with you on, on those steps. Okay? Somebody want to read the motion?
Read the motion.
Are we, just a point of order, so are we approving this in pieces or the whole budget or?
This is just the capital budget, right?
This is the capital budget.
Yeah, but I mean, now we're going to, so we're going to do it to two separate panels.
Right.
Okay.
Sure.
Move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve the calendar year 2019 capital budget in the amount of $7,804,373 as presented on the recommendation of the General Manager.
A second?
Second.
All right. Discussion? I guess we had that?
I guess we had it.
All those in favor? Motion carries for 00 and last week, the cab voted for 00 to approve that, capital budget as well.
Yes.
Thank you, Hamed.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I think we have Ms. Markowitz coming up to talk about the operating budget next. It's budgeting season. We have the handouts on this one?
Oh, we have a handout.
Yes, you have two handouts. No, I do not, I'm sorry. So let's, let's focus on the actual presentation handout first and then we'll do a little bit of the financials after that.
Okay.
So I'm here to present the calendar year 19 operating budget. Just a couple of brief highlights about the budget. The fixed costs represent 80.7% of the overall operating budget, of which 71.44% is power supply. The fixed cost decreased by about 4.26% from FY19's budget to CY19, due mainly to a reduction in power supply costs specifically fuel. Did you want to say anything about that, Jane?
No, it was an estimate at the time, fuels passed through. And so based on current projections, capacity comes down a little, transmission went up a little, but there was a significant decrease in estimate fuel.
Okay. Thank you.
So where does, I mean, labor is obviously a big component of the budget, right?
Yeah, you're going to see, you're going to see the whole thing. I just wanted to give you a couple.
Is that in the, you said, fixed costs? I mean, that's.
Fixed costs, uh, fixed costs are not labor. Labor's not in the fixed costs. Labor's in semi-variable. Fixed costs are the power supply costs.
Yeah, okay, I got you. Yeah.
Okay. So the semi-variable costs, to answer your question, Tom, represent about 19.3% of the overall operating budget. And the increase in semi-variable costs from FY19 to CY19 is about 2.6% overall. The overall operating budget is projected to decrease by about 2.94% from FY19 to CY19. And now we can go over this, this spreadsheet of the actual numbers. So the fixed costs versus the semi-variable costs, I know everyone likes to see this because it pretty much puts it all into perspective very quickly. So as you can see quickly, the top piece of the spreadsheet shows exactly the, their purchase power, fuel, capacity and transmission costs, which I mentioned were 71.44% of the budget. And then you have your depreciation expense at a rate of 3% is 4,524,000, which is 4.83% of the budget. You have your payment to the town of Reading of 2.48 million dollars, which is 2.65% of the budget. Then you have your four town payments, which is based on the 2% on net plant, which is about 1.6 million dollars, 1.68% of the budget. And then we have disposal of losses on equipment, about $100,000. And then down below, you have your semi-variable costs. And I'll just go over the, the high ticket items, if you will. Labor is about 7.12% of the budget. Your employee benefits and your pension expense is 3.83% of the budget. Then you have your operating and maintenance expenses, most, the majority of those, 2.76% of the budget. Conservation expenses, 1.05% of the budget. Then you have some overtime to get the projects done in a timely manner, another 1.06% of the budget. And then tree trimming comes in almost at 1% of the budget. And then everything else below that is less than half a percent of the budget, mostly, mostly less than half percent of the budget. So those are all your, your high-level items that take up the majority of the entire budget. Anybody have a question on any specific line item there?
I have one, Wendy.
Sure.
The employee benefits and pension.
Yes.
Does that percentage, is that continually going up? Can you give us a sense of each year, what that goes up?
Sure. So in there, you have your health insurance costs, of course, and that has been going up. Some years, pretty hefty and then other years, it seems like it's going to go up and then we're getting some credits as well. So it's not going up as drastically. I, I don't know the exact percentage of what that specifically is going up. But then you have your pension costs, which is basically an obligation that we have to pay to support the pension system. And that is going up, I believe about $400,000 a year at this, at this point.
It goes up 400 grand a year.
Yeah, it's going up very rapidly right now, okay? Because we're trying to reach a particular, we're trying to reach a particular, based on the actuary, actuarial reports, the town of Reading as a whole is trying to reach a specific time to be fully funded. Now, whether or not that's going to happen or not, but those are the obligations.
Funded in the town of Reading. I mean.
Oh, no, we are, but the obligation continues to increase based on what the actuarial report says and the timeline of everyone retiring and their lifespan and everything else.
Good point. But it's also heavily based on what future payments are for interest, right? Whatever the interest is. So with interest rate going up, the pension obligations should be coming down, actually.
Actually, the OPEB is going to be coming down. The pension's going up.
Pension's going up.
Yes. But the OPEB you will see in the next few years, it will start to come down. And the OPEB is the other post-employment benefits, so that's the health insurance to employees who've retired.
That's interesting.
Yes.
Okay, I would have thought it was the pension.
Because of the way. Because of the way it's being, because of the funding status of it and where we stand with it and how much we need to put into it in order to continue to meet our obligation.
Right, okay.
That make sense?
It, it does, although I've dealt with this in other commercial companies and, and the pension obligations are large and they were growing because the interest rates were so low and dropping. So it meant that all the accumulated monies, growth of those funds would not meet the obligation in the future years.
Right, and even though they are, so these actuarial, actuarial reports are stating a higher interest rate, I want to say between six and eight percent, we're not getting that kind of return on our money.
Six to eight percent.
But that is what the reports are showing. That's what they're estimating the value of the money on.
We questioned that.
We did, and we've been in, we, we've had some discussions with the town to talk about trying to figure out how we can better invest our funds, but at this moment, there's, there's no movement. That doesn't say we can't do a better job together to.
Yeah, well, I mean, you also.
Try to figure this out.
You can't, you can't put them in, in all, in all.
Yeah.
Stocks, and you lose half, half the money like two thousand nine.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I, one other question, Wendy.
Yes.
On the overtime.
Yes.
I noticed we budgeted almost a million dollars last year and it came in like eighty thousand dollars less. I'm surprised because we had those big storms. Why, is, was that captured in these numbers?
Um, so we budgeted, so on the left-hand side, we budgeted seven hundred and sixty-three thousand and we came in at eight ninety-four.
Oh, okay, so it was over.
There's your actual, yes.
Oh, it's the next year that was up, okay, the next year was budgeted.
The F Y nineteen budget was up, yes. So.
All right, I'm sorry, I misread that.
And that all depends as well on capital versus operating projects, so if you have more capital.
It's not just storms, it's also.
No, right, exactly, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move to the next slide. So I just wanted to give you a high-level picture of what the six-year plan shows. So on this slide, we are looking at budgeted net income as compared to budgeted rate of return for the six-year plan. So as you can see, the, the net income amount is on the top of the blue line, and you can see how it correlates to our rate of return. We discussed staying close to the eight percent rate of return in order to fund capital projects. And as we are feeling that the, the system is more safe and reliable, and we don't need to spend as much money, we believe that it's responsible to bring that rate of return down, and we're going to try to stay around the six, stay above the six percent mark. Okay, so that just shows that. The next slide shows you the budgeted kilowatt hours sold as compared to the budgeted rate of return. So we've been projecting that it's going, that the kilowatt hour sales are going to come in at a decrease of one percent each year. So you can see that trend as we see that it's going to happen, also in how it relates to the rate of return. So as it's coming down, the rate of return is also coming down. And the last slide talks about what Hameed was talking about, how the capital funds, basically where we get the money for the capital funds. So you look at the blue portion of, of the bar, and that's the beginning balance that we start the year off with. So you see the first year is six point five million. The reason it's so high is because we anticipating, we're getting ready for building the new substations. We want to make sure we have the funds in a timely manner. Because even though you see the orange portion of your depreciation fund, again, at the rate of three percent, is a healthy number, four point five million, we, we don't take the four point five million right at the beginning of the year, we spread that out over twelve months. So you, so if you would come in the, in the year with zero, you, you have no money to start your capital projects, so that doesn't seem reasonable. So that's why we start with a balance, basically knowing what, what kind of projects we're coming in at. And then you have your depreciation fund that is strictly reserved for capital projects. And then we try to make a determination on, based on the net income and the amount of money left over, what we can afford to put into capital projects from the operating fund. And then your yellow portion shows what we are contemplating as bund, I'm sorry, bond proceeds. And some of that is, a small portion of that is interest, interest income as well. And your forced accounts, of course, when you get a job from the state of Massachusetts. So the green bar next to it shows what the anticipated capital improvements will be based on Hameed's budget. So you can see that we are continuously, we're continuously investing in the system at a rate higher than the depreciation rate, which is the orange, which is why the need for continuing to transfer money from the operating fund. Okay, so that concludes the actual presentation, but I would like to take a minute to go over the financials. So you have another handout in front of you?
Yeah, Wendy, just a question.
Oh, yes.
So what happens, like in C Y nineteen, we have the six point five seven three and the four point five twenty-four. So those really in, in total are available for capital?
Yes, they are. So that top number, that, that in red, the twelve point three million dollars? Yes, that's ready for the, that, that money is ready.
Yeah, but we're budgeting.
At the end of the twelve months, though, Tom.
We're budgeting seven point eight, so what happens to the difference?
It sits there, it's just your regular checkbook for capital projects only.
Yeah, in case we exceed the budget.
Right, and also for timing differences. Like I said, the, the orange portion, it's spread over twelve months. You're not getting the four point five immediately. You're getting a twelfth of it every month.
Right. The, the other thing I think that Colleen pointed out in the paper was that should we have a, a.
Catastrophic.
Yeah, so, you know, the substation blows up or something happens to it, it's a huge expense. So you need to have something left over to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Exactly.
Okay, and the timing of the, the first year, Tom, because of the, you have to remember, we're switching from a fiscal year to a calendar year. The timing of that also.
Right.
Because we had already put in the funds on July one to start this capital projects. So that also is, is a little bit skewing the numbers there.
Can I add something?
Yes.
When you look at the capital, the depreciation fund, though, at the end of the six years, you see that it goes down to one point nine million. So Wendy and I have gone back and forth as far as what is the minimum balance that you leave in that depreciation fund. So two million dollars isn't really going to cover a catastrophe, but that, along with some other accounts, you might be able to pull it together. We don't want to leave too much money in there, so we kind of said no less than two million would be reasonable because, again, the next year that you start, you, you're going to be putting in your depreciation expense in twelve payments, so.
Right, so that's your comfort cushion of two million dollars, you always want to be.
Well, that's where we are right now, because, again, sales are coming down and we're talking about the town payment and we, we got a lot of balls in the air. So, you know, I think we both feel a little bit more comfortable with a little bit higher, but, you know, we've been transferring in and we're, we also would rather not bond. We have those placeholders, but we're, we're trying to make it all work, so.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so I just wanted to go over the financials for a minute. Unfortunately, we haven't had the audited presentation of the fiscal year eighteen financials yet. We are waiting for the actuarial, actuarial report based on the new G A S B for the O P E B, to bring the O P E B on the books. And the auditors are not comfortable doing a presentation without everything in front of them, which.
No.
Which means, which makes a lot of sense now. Okay, so the numbers, the F Y eighteen actual numbers should not change, and we got these right before the budget went out. So that's all I had for information at the time, so I do not have any updates on July and August numbers at this time. But for F Y eighteen actual, we came in at five point two million dollars, but I just want to let you know that that's a little misleading. We really came in with a real net income of four point five, but because of this O P E B, about a seven hundred thousand dollar decrease in expenses was part of the calculation, okay? So I just want to let you know that. So the rate of return came in under eight percent. And luckily, even though we had those three storms, luckily, but not really, because we're still understaffed and, and we have a lot of vacancies, but we did come under budget. I mean, we were pretty flat throughout the, the whole time, even though I didn't think we were going to be, so. Okay, I just want to clarify that.
So how were we able to do it with all those storms and still come under budget?
Well, we have a vacancy. I mean, we have a lot of vacancies, as we've discussed, and, you know. Vacant, employees, we, we have a lot of positions that are not filled at this time.
Right, so they were budgeted, but we didn't have to.
Right.
We didn't have those.
Right, so you have, you know, people are working harder. Okay, so, and then if you look at, so the, the overall budget, total operating revenues of ninety-six million dollars as, as I said, reduced by about three million dollars from F Y nineteen. And then you have your purchase power capacity and transmission and fuel costs of sixty-six point eight million dollars. And then your bottom line number, we're anticipating coming in at three point five million dollars, and that's what we're asking for your vote on. The second page just shows you just a comparison from what we presented in March for the F Y nineteen budget as compared to the C Y nineteen budget as we're presenting right now. So I just wanted to have that in front of you so that way you could see it clearly. So we are asking for a total net income of three million five hundred twenty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars, and we are not raising rates in order to make that net income.
All right.
This time.
Okay, any other questions for Wendy?
I guess this is more for just future discussion, so the, this slide is pretty revealing in terms of.
It is, yeah.
And I know we'll talk about it in another while, another topic, but I think as board and as the staff, it'd be important, you know, because in a business, John, you have a lot of experience with this, you'll sometimes forecast a decline in sales for a given year or something, but, you know, we're sort of, and safely, we're sort of projecting this, but as an ongoing economic model, you know, we need to think about the implications of that long term. So if it, over a long enough stretch, like one percent a year decline, I think we all know what that means, right?
Right, and it looks very systemic, right? I mean, it's happening over a period of time.
Yeah, and, and we don't, and I think Colleen is pointing, I mean, there's other things we don't know about economic development, but I guess it, Dave has sounded the horn a bunch of times. I think we need to revisit some of the early discussions around, on the strategy around, you know, income opportunities. And, and Colleen, you've already brought in some thoughts on that with presenters, but how do we, you know, offset? Because it's like the company that, you know, loses a plant or two or ten in their region, right? You still, you, you eventually have to replace that with other businesses or.
Right.
Companies invent new pro, I mean, there's things that every business does to, to be sustainable. It's really about sustainability, right?
Absolutely.
And unfortunately, a lot of the improvements that are going on in our business have reduced revenue, right? Because they're more efficient, so.
And then it seems to be our charter, too, is to help our customers reduce their costs.
Yeah.
And that's, but that's at such a difficult juncture with the fact that we're also a fixed cost organization.
Well, and, and that's why in some businesses they have fixed fee agreements, because you basically are paying the same amount of money to make a customer more efficient, right? But in this case, we're not getting any more revenue for providing more efficiency or any more benefit in terms of profit, so.
And we're not, and we're not the only ones. A lot of munis like us are facing the same thing.
Yeah, 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 which is another good point. I, I think we may want to listen to what they're doing and, because everyone's going to have to deal with it. This is not a, you know, this is not a good, I mean, if you were doing your consulting, John, you'd recommend some, some new strategies, right?
Absolutely, you know, and it also depends on what your bottom line looks like and what you're chartered to do. I mean, as a for-profit corporation, you know, you might be able to put in cost-reduction efforts or invest in automation or do other things that could help, but this is not that, that case.
Okay, but, yeah, thanks, Wendy, for good.
You're welcome.
Anything else, outside?
Oh, do you need to read the motion here?
Yeah, go ahead.
I can do that.
Are we allowed to ask any more questions?
Yes.
Oh, sure.
Yep, we're gonna, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Wendy.
Oh, yes, sir.
Dave, and Phil, I got a couple of questions, too, I don't have a chance to look at.
Phil, any questions on what was presented?
No, no, I'm fine, I'm fine.
You could probably look, you could probably read that real quickly.
Did I miss anything?
No, nothing of any significance.
I got it.
All right.
So I'm just wondering about some of these line items.
Oh, sure.
If, if employee benefits pension was twenty-nine hundred, maybe you've played it, I just missed it, and now it's thirty-seven hundred. If it was twenty-nine hundred, actual fiscal eighteen and budgeting, sorry, two point nine and budgeting three point seven, that's a, a large increase.
Oh, can I tell you why?
Yeah, you might have already done it.
Yeah, that's okay. What happened was, you may not remember, on the financials, we had an underfunded O P E B. We were just trying to play catch-up there.
Okay, sorry about that. Labor, again, is going up four hundred thousand. Is that just, that looks like about a seven percent increase.
Uh, okay, once again, the operating budget and the capital budget together have your labor, and it depends on what portion of, how much capital, how many capital projects we have versus operating. So when we presented the F Y nineteen budget, Hameed was anticipating a higher cost of capital projects. And now with the C Y nineteen budget, he's actually.
That's just salaries, that's.
No, so it's, it depends on what portion goes to capital and which portion stays in the operating.
One thing that, and I think, Phil, not to put you on the spot, but I think you've asked about this in, in the past, is if we're spending more than a half a million dollars on lawyers every year, you know, is there a way to, to, to cut down on how much we're spending on lawyers?
You see a little bit of increase this year because it is a negotiating year, so we wanted to make sure to be prepared for that.
It's a half a million dollars that, what, five forty-seven was actually spent and we budgeted four seventy-one. I mean, those are just very large numbers, and I, I come in and see very large invoices, and I know we all do.
Yes.
I just, do, do we have a policy around?
I, I believe Colleen has mentioned, and correct me if I'm wrong, that when we revisited all the policies, that's where a large chunk of the money, and also this year we had some.
That's what I meant, I meant that we, as a board, maybe should set some policies about our oversight.
Okay.
On, on legal expenses and, that's what I mean, not, I guess, but I know one thing we spent a lot of money on was having our policies edited and reviewed.
Yes, and also the power contracts.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and we had a white paper written, which I think was to all of our benefit. Tremendous impact, as a matter of fact. And I think we used to spend in years past significantly more than what we're spending today.
Yeah, I don't have a frame of reference for this. I mean, like, what does a town spend on, on lawyers and what does an average media utility spend on lawyers? Do you have a sense, Phil?
Honestly, I have no idea. You also can't compare us to the town. I mean, it's a whole different animal here, as to what they're dealing with, what we're dealing with here.
All right.
I think that's an unfair comparison.
I'm not, I'm not, if it's fair or unfair, I just, I, I look at half a million dollars in lawyers and I'm just, I'm just asking the question.
Dave, if I may, I mean, it's fair in the sense that you value a legal opinion, and if the legal opinion doesn't work for you, then you could be in, you know, in line for a multi-million dollar suit, which the town was. So I'm all for hiring very competent attorneys for whatever purpose.
So could I make a suggestion on a non-urgent basis, because things are busy? So what I'm hearing, I think there's two, when we look at our budget, so there's two issues. One is the size of the bucket, and, you know, I think it would be worthwhile, you know, again, not urgently, but to look and maybe do just a five-year look back to see what the trend has been. So if it's been going down every year, that would suggest, you know, improvements are being made. And maybe look at just parade of what the expenses are. So clearly, you know, with union negotiations, that's, if that's X percent of the pie, and then if there's only three or four buckets, I'm sure the policy's that, and.
And to Dave's point, I, I think looking at what comparably sized systems spend, I think would be a rational thing to do. I, I do think having three unions here and the sort of issues that we faced around all the negotiations perhaps has caused more than, more than the normal amount of, of, of hours needed by the attorneys. I, I don't know that for a fact, but I suspect that's the case. But I, but I agree with you, Dave, I, I think it's a good thing to look at.
Yeah, you get some context.
We don't have an in-house counsel, right, because the, the towns sometimes have a town staff that would be alert.
It's very different. Right, we don't retain someone because we use different special, specialists. We have labor council, we have power supply and FERC council, you know, to protect us against millions and millions of dollars worth of suits. And we have, you know, regular council that helps us with policies, you know, so I, I'm more than happy to put together our spread. You know, so I'm more than happy to put together a spreadsheet explaining where it's going.
We actually have that.
Yeah, when I came, labor council was seven hundred and eighty dollars an hour, and I get it down to three hundred.
No, that's great.
So I may be doing five times as much work as was being done before, and maybe the bill might be still the same. But you're getting five times more than work, because we're addressing.
You, we were paying double?
We were paying seven hundred and eighty dollars an hour.
Yes.
For the labor lawyer.
Yes.
For the one labor council.
Yes.
So that's the high end of legal.
So I got it down to less than half, and then I tripled the work for the same price. So I'm more than happy to put it together, and no one can call an attorney in this building unless they talk to me, so.
Which is also a very good policy.
You know, so, you know, when you come in and you're looking at a bill where we are, you know, in a, a legal dispute with many, many other utilities. And we are, you know, asking testimony to come in and people to, we have to pay our share of people coming in for testimony. It's kind of out of a control. But what does happen is all of the utilities that said they would share a particular cost that we agreed to, and the lawyer in charge starts to go over, trust me that he's getting a million emails that he's going over. And we're all complaining, hey, you said it was going to be this, and now it's starting to creep up. So then he has to let us know why.
Duncan Allen.
Well, I'm giving as an example, it's not just Duncan Allen, it happens more than that. But that might be a particular example, where we're splitting a lawyer's fee maybe ten ways. And he gives us an estimate, and the lawsuit goes a little bit longer, or it's a little bit bigger, or they have testimonial comes in. And, you know, they're trying to win. But, yeah, we may pay fifty thousand dollars for that legal fee, but the loss is two point eight million for just Reading. So, you know, that's what I'm saying. I'll be glad to write down the categories and what the alternative is. Because setting a policy or guide or anything more than what I'm already doing operating-wise for legal would really, you really would need to know the alternative measure before we get too much in constraining me operationally for that.
Looking to constrain, I guess, I mean, one of our roles is to ask these questions.
Yes.
So it should be okay to ask the questions.
Oh, it is.
It's a good idea to ask a question.
I came in on a Saturday and I saw a guy paid fifty-two thousand dollars, one guy, a consultant in Colorado, fifty-two thousand dollars for two weeks of work. I questioned it, and it comes back on the board book as a question about legal fees. My actual question was not put in the board book. So I don't know, you know, when are we, what is the level at which we ask questions and get answers and understand these kind of enormous bills that come through?
Dave, we do have a spreadsheet. If you would like the breakdown of the legal costs, we'd be happy to give that to you.
And I think the questions are great. And I'm, I said I would put together a chart and explain it. I was only speaking to what you said originally. But we need a board policy to control this. And I'm saying, before you set those type of parameters, let me explain to you over historically what's been happening with legal fees and where we are. You may not find that it's, you know, that it's out of control, that it, that it's very much.
Why don't we add something to the agenda on November about the question thing, about how we ask questions and how we get those answers?
Yeah, that's a related, related matter is, so we have this process where we come in and look at the AP warrant, right? It's built into what we do. Like, we have a few things that we do. Okay, so we ask a question, but like, the question that we ask is never publicized, and the answer that we get is never, like, made public.
Well, my question wasn't, wasn't. Car accident the day after, so that was my fault. I apologize for that.
Yeah.
That was the one you didn't sign, correct?
Well, I did sign it, but I put, I put my question in email, so.
Okay, I can forward that.
It's okay, I mean.
Yeah, no, I will say, Dave, I agree with your concern if, the process. But I've questioned different items on both the warrant, you know, the payables and the salaries. And they get answered, you know, and if, and if it's not a complete answer, I think.
Yeah, you were, you were more like, well, you want a shared answer? Is that what you're saying? You want to?
I always send to everyone.
And then gets, and then this is the answer.
The question I asked was in an email. It wasn't shared with the other commissioners. It's not in the board book, and I don't have the answer, so. And now I'm asking about this. It's okay, we can move on, you know?
I, I don't have a problem answering any questions, Dave.
But let's, but let's put on the November agenda.
We can put on, we can cover a little bit more in November.
Sure.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Because I mean, maybe we should revisit the process of how we sign that warrant anyway again, and how we raise questions on that warrant.
Yeah.
Be fine with me, yeah.
Right.
Can I do the motion?
Sure, would you?
Move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve the calendar year two thousand and nineteen operating budget with a net income of three million, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars as presented on the recommendation of the general manager.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, all the discussion. We had a lot of discussion. All those in favor?
Mr. Chair, I will abstain because I was not present for the full discussion, even though I approved the budget.
You're an honorable man.
Yes, even though I, even though I read the budget and approved it, I was not here for Wendy's.
Four to zero to one.
Citulating this presentation.
Thank you, Wendy. May I make a, just for the, for the records for next year, I knew there was a reason. So it's just a point, the reason I think, we've combined it to one day. I think it's better to present both the CapEx budget first and then the operating budget, and then approve it once. Because if this didn't happen, if we were having issues with the operating budget, it might impact the need to pull money out of the CapEx and have to.
So do them as a tandem.
We do aside with town meeting, so we approve the school, we tentatively approve in the sense of answer all the questions. So any more questions, no, then we lay it aside, so everybody, and then.
And then do both of them.
At the end, you can do both, but you know what I mean? Because if you, if you have an issue with the operating budget, you don't have any way to, to, you know, because they're related, right? You can cut back on some of the.
There's an overlap, right.
Yeah, you could reduce your CapEx, but you've already approved the CapEx, which I guess you could undo, but I just think it's more efficient.
All right, we'll do that from now on.
Just a suggestion, friendly suggestion.
No, I think it's, I think we should enact it. Excellent. And the CAB also voted for O to recommend the operating budget.
Well, then that makes it even a better decision.
It is, it's all. And now for the very last time.
Dave, may I ask?
Oh, yes.
Just to make sure that I got the action items. So on the November, we want to put on an agenda AP process. And then you want a presentation of the legal fee explanation and the parking lot conceptual.
Yes, I mean, the parking lot one doesn't have to be next month. I think what you were saying, Dave, is just as we get closer to action on that, to involve us again.
It's already been going, because we're, again, we're, we've skipped to a calendar year budget, so we're already halfway.
Yes, so, yes.
Because it was approved a couple of years ago, so I don't want to spend any more money on it. So I'd rather bring in the conceptual of where we are and take a look at it.
Great, that's perfect.
Are all three of those doable for November? I mean, I know.
Do we have a lot of other stuff on the agenda for November? Probably not. So I think that's.
Is that manageable for you, Ken?
Yeah, absolutely.
Great. And then for the last time, we're going to welcome up Jane to do the integrated resources. This is sentimental for Jane, to be able to do this the last time. The power broker.
Accepting any action items as well, right, Jane?
Correct. Thank you very much, and I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the board for all your support. It's been a pleasure here. I've grown quite a bit over the twenty-six years, and it's been a real pleasure. I'm looking forward to moving on in this new role as general manager at Holden, so thank you all very much.
Congratulations, Jane.
Congratulations.
So I only have three quick slides for you. It's a short month. The first slide looks at the two thousand sixteen through eighteen, the coincident peak with RMLD's load. This kind of talks to Mr. Talbot's question. So historically, the pink column shows what the ISO's peak is. And as you can see, in two thousand sixteen, the ISO's peak was twenty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-six megawatts. And we hit a higher peak this year of twenty-five, seven sixty-three. That's preliminary, that won't finalize from the ISO, but we believe that occurred on August twenty-ninth at six P M. Our load on that occasion was one fifty-nine point six four three, and that compares to one sixty-three in two thousand sixteen. So again, to Dave's question, how much does the shred the peak really get involved? One of the differences in two thousand eighteen from two thousand sixteen that occurred is we had our generator online. So we had a two point three megawatt reduction. However, when you just do the ratios of the sixteenth versus the total and the eighteenth versus the total, and then subtract the, the two point three, that, there's a significant decrease in RMLD's peak. And it's in the range of three to five megawatts. So we have some solar on, we have some P D R programs with our commercial customers, as well as our shred the peak alert. We had two thousand customers signed up specifically that we contact on the summer basis, as well as going forward to reduce our transmission peak. So the customers have actually taken an active interest. And again, just on very basic ratios, we're going to send out a report to them that there was a significant decrease in two thousand eighteen versus two thousand sixteen. And so that's.
That deserves a little.
Yeah, no, and again, again, my group did a really great job in terms of trying to educate. We held a couple of sessions at various libraries. We had a session here in January just to kind of explain to people why we want to shred the peak, the cost impact to that. And our customers seem to really be embracing that and working with us to try to, to reduce that amount. And, you know, you could see that it is occurring between these last three years.
It was well done. I mean, the challenge is, we had a lot of almost shave the peak days.
And it's a repetitive process, so what you don't want people to do is get discouraged, because they're like, how many times are they going to call this?
Well, I think it was handled well and how it got communicated.
Yeah, thank you very much, Tom. I, I think the group did a really great job. And so the next slide looked as the day-ahead prices. So within our ISO model, we have day-ahead and real-time prices. And we looked at August twelfth, which was the peak in two thousand sixteen, June seventeenth, which is kind of an anomaly, very rare for ISO to, to peak in June, but that did occur in two thousand seventeen. And on this year, as I mentioned before, it was on August twenty-ninth. So it's, it's kind of difficult. The black line would be the sixteen peak. In, in June of two thousand seventeen was the light blue line. And in August, the prices were a little higher during those peaks. So again, anytime we can reduce that power, that translates into less power that we're buying in the day-ahead markets at those prices. And then the final slide looks at real-time prices. And as you can see here, in twenty, this is kind of just the opposite. So because that peak was fairly high in, in two thousand sixteen, the light pink line prices went all the way up to three hundred and sixty dollars in real time. However, in the next two subsequent years, two thousand seventeen and eighteen, prices were, again, it's a peak day. Loads are high, generators, the very dirty, you know, oil burning units are burning. And so that tends to cause the prices on those peak days to be, to be significantly higher than on a typical off-peak period or even a shoulder month period. The prices were half the prices that they were in two thousand sixteen. That's all I have for you this, this month.
Questions for Jane?
Looks good.
I just, I just have one more comment. Even though you won't be in Reading, we'll always beholden you in our hearts. I just wanted to say that.
Jane, Jane, Jane has something.
I, I thought about her a few minutes ago. I was starting to smile, just thinking about her.
Let me just say a few things.
Yeah.
Jane has been here as long as I have.
Wow.
Correct.
Yeah, she was originally, Vinnie Cameron was originally brought in to run the Energy Services Division.
She was in third grade.
And the first, and the first, first person she hired was Jane. We stole Jane out of Embank. Yes, on that. So thank you, Jane, for all the years.
It's been a pleasure.
It's been a pleasure, and I'm sure Holden, you're going to be wearing many, many hats out there, many hats. I'm well aware of what Holden is. I've got friends who live in Sterling, so you'll, there'll be many hats and many responsibilities you'll have out there. So congratulations and good luck, okay?
Nicely done.
Hamid, you're back up here? Wow. Engineering and Operations.
I guess we could say you have muni friends here.
I like that.
Getting worse.
Hello again. I'm reporting the month of July and August two thousand eighteen, the Engineering and Operations Report. The first slide, you see the expenditures for the month of July and August and year-to-date actual, and what's remaining from the budget, what was budget, basically. Those are the projects. You see the expenditures on the right. The second slide talks about the routine capital construction. These are the pole hits, the overhead underground subdivisions that we do. We uproot everything as explained, that, you know, we've got many of those projects that are assigned, assigned that are required to pole damage replacement, hazmat, oil spills, the station work, any work that we, we need to do inside the station, replacing the lightening arresters, porcelain cutouts, animal guards, and, you know, all of those that bring the year-to-date to three hundred ten thousand, two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. The next slide shows the facilities, IRD and IT, basically the expenditures you see. And year-to-date is nine hundred ten thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars. That the remaining balance from what was budgeted is six million, six hundred sixty thousand, one hundred sixty-four dollars. The next slide shows the routine construction, the next one, oh, yeah, yeah. Routine maintenance, those maintenance, the scheduled maintenance programs that, you know, we created, we developed back in two thousand fourteen. And the first one, transformer replacement, we have approximately thirty percent of the pad mount, the underground system is replaced. And they're upgraded. The overhead is approximately twenty-two percent. The pole inspection program, you know, we have replaced so far two hundred thirty-seven poles, which hundred eighty-nine of those has been transferred, and we continue keeping up with the transfers. The inspection of the feeders, these are all the circuits. You see that quarterly we are inspecting feeders. And to make sure nothing is going wrong, and if any, there is any potential failures or potential problems, we try to fix them. Manhole inspections, it's going on schedule as expected, nine hundred sixty-one out of one thousand, two hundred thirty-seven. And the porcelain cutout replacements, as we are going through the developments, and also the feeders making, making all these upgrades, we take this opportunity to replace those with a polymer type. So those are all going well. The next slide is tree trimming. We had three tree spans in the month of July and thirty-one spans in the month of August. And year-to-date, we have sixty-four spans through the August. We had some hazardous trees that they had to be taken down, and, you know, we got taking those. This is the time to do them before you reach the wintertime with the storms and, you know. So we have taken care of lots, lots of those as well. Also along the, the railroad track, the feed from station four to station five, that, you know, it's, they needed heavy trimming, and also they are being done. The substation maintenance program, the infrared scan, so far we haven't found anything, obviously, because we keep a good maintenance of all the equipment at the substation, so we haven't found anything that is a concern. The underground subdivision upgrades, they see that, you know, we continuously upgrading those, and we going through those as I explained the last time. We've got like, what, fifty or sixty development that they all aged, you know, they need to, based on the age and the condition of the equipment, we have prioritized them, and we're going through these developments, upgrading, uprooting basically everything, upgrading all the equipment, the cables, transformers, poles, everything. So those are the list of the projects that they completed, and we've got some projects that are in progress as. So this is right now, it's becoming one of the priorities. I've got many priorities, but this is right now the highest priority, because, you know, lots of these undergrounds, you know, they're old, forty, forty-five years old, as old as me. So the next pole is, the next slide is devil poles. That's a question, I said approximately we have sixteen thousand poles, the ownership is fifty-fifty, but the custodial are in the Reading, they split between Reading and Verizon. And the north Reading is RMLD, Linfield is Verizon, and Wilmington is Verizon. So the custodial are split between Verizon and RMLD. The next pole, the next slide is the engines, the report that we get from that system that's shared between Comcast, Verizon, and US, and also fire department for, in every. shared between Comcast, Verizon, and US, and also fire department for, in every town. So we know whose ball is in court and who's responsibility is to do the transfers and when you set the new poles. In tunnel Linfield, RMLD has approximately 19 poles to replace to actually do the transfers. They have done the, also set the poles already. North Reading, we have nine transfers and 44 pole bots that they need to be removed. In Reading, we have one transfer to do, I'm sorry, in Reading, we have got 27 transfers and 18 pole bots to remove. And in tunnel Wilmington, we have, RMLD has 28 transfers and four pole bots that they need to be removed out of the ground. We have lots of construction going on as I've mentioned past. We've got lots, lots, lots of improvements, that system improvements that the people they see, the trucks are out there, they're making for the reliability reasons. So there are lots of, you know, these pole transfers, they see that they're taking place, the devil poles, that we are taking them and we are doing the transfers in a timely manner. We don't have any control over the Verizon and Comcast. Sometimes if you see those poles, they're sitting there for, you know, a few weeks or a few months. We do the best we can, but they have the same system. So they know this is, the ball is in their court and they need to move on. But, you know, it's out of our control. The next slide shows you the reliability indices, basically SAD, KD, and SAFI. And they're all well under national and regional averages. So we are all doing good, moving in the right direction. The SAFI that you see, it's a little bit up this year because of all these problems that we've had with the trees, the trees that unexpectedly, you know, they come in down, you know, shallow roots, lots of rain, and, you know, these trees, they fall and we need, we've had quite a few of those in Reading, North Reading, and also Wilmington area, and some in Linfield. So that's the cause of that, these pockets of aridities that they're caused by them. So that's why that's a little bit up. The next slide showing the causes of aridities as of August 2018, you see that, you know, the trend, it's pretty much gone down based on when you compare them, comparing them to the five years average from 2013 to 2017. So for 2018 and now, you know, it's, they see that, you know, these numbers, they're going down. So, and that shows that we are on the right track of our maintenance program is working, basically. That's what it shows. That concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to-
Questions, anybody?
The best you can.
And Jason, whenever you always are open for questions.
Looks good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
I think you're staying up here, Hameed, right? You have, you want to buy some metal? No, some meters?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So, motion? Would you like me to read the motion?
Sure.
Move that IFP 2019.03 for Cooper Power Systems meters and equipment for the AMI mesh network system expansion and migration be awarded to Cannon Technologies Inc., an affiliate of Eaton Corporation PLC, doing business as Eaton for $274,380 pursuant to MGL Chapter 164 506D on the recommendation of the general manager.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Do you want to give us the background on this?
By all means, this is as I explained, as part of the mesh network expansion. So we're replacing these meters to put the strength more into the mesh network and make the network stronger for two-way communications between the meters and the skater. And so the lowest responsible responsive bidder was Cannon Technologies. I mean, the last time we sent a bid to 15 bidders and only two, they, you know, they responded. And the one that responded, they only responded on one item, which was, you know, substantially more than what the successful bidder was. So this time around, we use Chapter 164 and we gave it to the same vendor and, you know, it's, it came out really reasonably, you know, below what we expected, which is $274,380,000. So that's what the story is with that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, question?
Yes.
I noticed there wasn't any kind of, you know, what you budgeted for this? Anywhere in the material? Do you know how much you budgeted this for?
On this one, it was budgeted, let me take a look at it, that was for 2,000-
Did you see that anywhere in the, I didn't see, no, I didn't see anywhere in the proposal here, in the write-up. Usually we put the, what it's budgeted for in the write-up.
Yeah, usually we should, I believe it was 300, let me take a look at it. Can I take a look at that budget thing?
It might be in this big thing here. Mesh network. 300?
What's on? This page is on the second page?
It was-
Oh, right there, 300.
For FY '19, it was-
Yeah, line number 33?
Yeah, that's right. It was 121,000. And, but this one is-
300.
For CY '19 and FY, total together, that, you know, that means $300,000 that we're asking for FY, they're not going to come in until toward the 2019. So it is-
So that's the 300,000.
So it's less than $300,000, right?
It is 300,000, okay.
So you order them now, they won't be delivered until-
You order them now and it takes, you know, for manufacturer to put them together and send them in different shipment, they take, you know, it takes quite-
It just, you know, I did not see it in the write-up that you've given us here.
Yeah.
So can I make a point that you put that in in the future, please?
Sure, definitely. By all means, yes, we should have. I'm sorry, I wasn't there. Usually put that behind there.
So we have to go scrub and look for it?
Usually they, usually prepare them, put them, they miss them, so we'll put them there the next time.
Okay, any other questions?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor? 500, motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay.
I guess, let's go, I think we should go back to-
Sure.
Item seven.
Right, item seven. Everything else been covered?
Yeah, we covered everything. Well, just, we're going to do the meetings at the end for the next board meeting. We'll do that at the end.
Okay, right, that's fine. We'll go to seven.
So why don't we go to item seven, and that is the issue of the payment of the town.
Okay. Hameed also?
Oh, Hameed, do you have everything you've heated?
No, if you want to stay here, I'd be more than happy to.
No, whatever you want to say. I don't know. Sorry.
Thank you.
So I was going to make just a couple comments and then Noel and I can talk. So you about that, if that's okay?
About the payment for the town?
Yeah.
Sure. You guys are committee members, so, right?
So Colleen completed a study, worked on a study anyway, did some excellent analysis on the payment to the town and the different metrics and variables that could be considered along with the charter of the RMLD and what we're trying to strive to create here. And it was tied also to the RMLD six-year strategic plan, which is, many times you don't see that, that the study is not tied necessarily to the strategy, but what this was. And the key in all of this is really the convergence. And when we're talking about the convergence, we've heard it here over the last X number of meetings, is the kilowatt hour sales are seemingly decreasing and yet we have an increasing payment to the town of Reading, which at the, in the worst case, would leave us in the out-years drastically short of any kind of net income. Actually, net income would go negative by some of the scenarios that have been projected. So we'd have no way to build up our capital reserves for the future. And that's really what we're trying to wrestle with here in terms of getting an answer. So, and the metrics that I'm talking about here are, how should you track this? Should it be the CPI, which has been used historically? Should it be percent of net plant? Should we use some other metrics such as mils per kilowatt hour? And there's, there's good arguments, I think, on all sides, although I think that there's, given where we are today, there's perhaps a leaning towards one versus the other in terms of being able to choose something. So Colleen and Wendy and Hameed have put together two to three scenarios in terms of projections for the future about what this could be. And what I'm talking about is wrapping this into a financial analysis like we've just seen here in terms of decreasing kilowatt hour sales, what that means in terms of revenue, working embedding all the various costs that are associated with it. And it has some very interesting repercussions in terms of which scenario that you're looking at, which assumptions you're using. So what I'd like to propose is that we submit these scenarios to, along with the modified study, to the subcommittee by the weekend so that the subcommittee has a chance to look at the scenarios, get grounded in what the financials really mean, understand the background that Colleen used to write the study in the first place. And then, by the way, that's on Tuesday night, next week, we have this, this meeting.
And are there two, two CAB members or just one CAB member?
There's one CAB member, I believe, right?
There's two CAB members.
Two CAB members?
Neil and-
Neil and George.
George, right, great, very good. And then we can certainly discuss the implications of what those financial implications are within that. And then return to the board for approval of what we think is the correct scenario by our next board meeting or if we need to put it in place before then, make sure we meet town meeting, you know, we can do that. And I, I think that, just my own opinion, and I think Phil perhaps shares this with us, is that this, this transition is a change and no community likes to see massive changes happening overnight. Not to suggest that it would be massive at all because things could change. I mean, the convergence curve we're talking about, if everybody went out and bought an electric car, you know, we would not have this problem, right? It would start kicking back up again. So we always hope for the best. But given the, sort of the facts of the situation, we think that trying to develop a consensus around that, perhaps holding the payment for one year through CY '19 steady in terms of what it has been, and then implement a new system, or I shouldn't say a new, a different system of calculating what the rate should be to Reading so that we can preserve, at least for a six-year period of time, the ability to fund our system, to fund the capital, and to make sure that in the future we have enough capital to keep on top of the maintenance and everything else that we, we need for the system reliability. So, so that's basically what I'd like to suggest that we do, if the board is, would agree with that. So by tomorrow, sometime, we'll have a few spreadsheets that kind of lay out some thoughts, a little bit of background, and perhaps some of the other draft. The study right now is stamped draft. I think we just need to, perhaps Colleen needs to review certain portions of that and then take the draft off and we can send it to the committee and then we can have a discussion at the committee about the implications, what it means, et cetera. And then hopefully be able to develop consensus within the subcommittee, bring it back to the board for our approval or disapproval.
So let me, let me go forward with that. Couple of things, and Mr. O'Rourke actually has pointed out to me that some of the numbers that are in the town of Reading payment CPI column may not be in the right order. I believe Mr. O'Rourke has pointed out that some of these numbers may need to be corrected and put in the right order at this point, because I don't think they're in the right order. Also, you know, we've got a couple blanks in here for, under the, we've got the 2018, 19. We should come up with some comparable numbers that are, that are comparable to those, those numbers there. So we kind of fill in the whole picture on that one. So this is what we talked about, about adjusting some of these things, you know, and then I think at that point, you know, maybe it's appropriate to take the draft off and we make some of these changes over the weekend at this point. I agree with everything John said. The only thing that I differ on, and it's something we work out in the committee, is I'd like to see this stays put for two years as opposed to one. And I'd like to see two years because I think that would give the town the warning that they need to do some, some economic development. Give them the two years of economic development. But that's something we will work out in the committee at this point, you know. And I know that we talked about economic development for ages, and I don't know if anybody saw the community meeting last night, I was not able to attend on that, but they did talk about the downtown area last night. I'm not sure exactly what came out of that at this point, but I wasn't, because I was not able to attend. But I think that's my thought, to do it for two years. And then potentially, you know, we need to get away from the CPI. I'm not crazy about the net of plant, net percentage of plant. I'm not crazy about that at all.
No, right.
It doesn't seem to be connected to profitability.
And I think the mils, the mils per kilowatt hour, and even during this two-year period, you know, I had the crazy thought that if, you know, if the, if we use the 3.5 and those, and the actual numbers come in, we hire them, we would have the freeze, and we'd do something with that if the numbers came in higher during that period of time possibly. But again, these are things we worked out in the subcommittee. But I do think we need to adjust, you know, those items that I brought up here to get adjusted and on the, on the report.
Right, and we'd probably not take it out as far as it shows on that chart either.
Yeah, you said six years was a good way about-
Yeah, I actually prefer five years, but I know we have a six-year plan, so I think that ties with a six-year perspective.
Yeah, okay, I think taking it for six years would be fine, too.
And 10 years, who knows where anybody's going to be, right? And I think, try and read the crystal ball that far into the future.
I will not be here in 10 years.
You said that 20 years ago.
Tom?
Yeah, we're good, we're good.
Yeah, so just a few comments. So I guess I've, since I've thought about it, so if you look on the back page of the study, the two alternate-
Right.
...recommendations are blank. You know, the reason they're blank is because obviously they're, they wouldn't be implemented till this year. I guess the point is, if you want to make an apples-to-apples comparison, they-
Right, we need to put a comparable figure in.
The numbers are the same for 17 and 18 because they were down to the old system. I guess as long as people understand that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be looking to put maybe the 3.5 in each of those two numbers and then just work it out going forward to the next column over possibly, in that first two columns. And maybe the two and a half on the, the two right-hand columns, potentially, something like that.
Does that make sense, Colleen, to hear what Phil's saying?
Yeah, the error in the first column is that it's, instead of CY '19, it's FY '19. And then it just moves down one. So the, the payments aren't wrong, it just, it aligns because we switch from a fiscal year to calendar year.
Right.
So I'll just clarify that.
Yeah. Yeah, the only thing they need to understand is when you do the calculation, it's for the year before, I guess. You know what I mean? So like, under the, what says CY '20, which is really 19.
Well, you would take the audited, you know, you would take your final sales at the end of the calendar year-
All right, so maybe, maybe we need to put a little numeral in there, number one, and define what, maybe some definition of that, where that number's coming from.
Yeah, actually, what I think would be very helpful is maybe just one example for the first year under the new arrangements. Just do one example.
If I cut this, so-
Because, yeah, for the 3.5 mils under what says CY '20 is based on the 655, 923, 460 number. That's how the formula works. So it's not, it's not horizontal, you have to go up one. I'm not sure they'll be obvious to the subcommittee members. But, but the, so the general comments, I wanted to just reinforce, and I agree with what John and Phil have laid out. So one is that I think it's always good to ground everybody and the reality is, the payments to date have been based on picking a 1997 number, maybe Phil's the only one who would remember where that came from, and continuously adding the CPI index to it, regardless of performance of the utility. So, so that's really why, in part, it's unsustainable because it keeps going up and up. Even if we had flat revenues in a year, it keeps growing and growing and it's got to the point that, you know. So I think that, that's a baseline comment. The other thing is, you know, the realities that you guys have brought out of lower declining revenues and improved efficiencies, that they also impact that piece. And then I guess what I would also suggest is that we, we look at reviewing this thing, you know, in a couple of years. I think that it's, this is new territory, I mean, declining revenues. I mean, I've been on the board a short time, but Phil, I don't know if you, you haven't seen declining revenues for a few years straight.
It depends upon what the economy has been. I mean, back in the 80s, we were going great.
Yeah. But generally speaking, companies, you know, if they have a bad year, they rebound the next year, you know, they don't stay flat for a decline every year. So I think whatever I'd suggest, if from first discussion at the subcommittee, maybe looking at a review so we can better understand. And lastly, the only reason for showing the number of years, which I agree with John, I mean, it's hard to predict, the, the only value of the exercise is as you, is it's continued- continued out, don't forget, this is predicated on the CapEx spend eventually keeping up with, catching up with our infrastructure. So I just did a quick off-the-top calculation. For the first five years, the town payment under that first scenario decreases about 80,000 per year, each year. But then after that, it has a very moderate, it's like 15,000 to 20,000. So that's the, that's, that's missing if you cut that off, and I'll leave that up to you guys, you're going to be in, in meetings. So the only reason for the whole display is basically what it says in the early years, because we're investing so much CapEx, we can't afford not to do that.
And that's a worst-case scenario. I mean, you know, we should point that out, that, well, I mean, if we started dropping 2% or 3% per year, it'd be worst case, but we, we think at 1%, it's worst case from what we've seen from the trend lines and from historical perspective. So if anything, it could be, there could be an upside to this where it doesn't drop off, and that's fine.
Right, yeah. And I say, I guess my last comment, which I think is obvious, but maybe to the listening audience unaware of it, we began this process with the request to look at how payments could be increased, and what we quickly discovered is that we can't do that. In fact, they, they have to take a declining, flattening approach just because of the realities we're talking about.
Right, in order, in order for the, the system to sustain itself.
Exactly.
If the present way was going is that the system would just not be able to sustain itself going forward. So in essence, you know, even though it may be the opposite of what was intended, it came out to be, the result came out to be something that we should have been looking at maybe all along, quite truthfully, at this point.
And I did want to say, Colleen deserves some recognition. You know, we were going to sub this out to a consultant, and I think, John, I know that your work, the report's pretty impressive.
I think it's very impressive.
So if I'm asked for saving money, do I get three spaces in my bucket list?
I was just about to say.
I'll take it. So, thank you, Dave.
Oh, I thought you wanted your own profit.
I think she's teasing you.
Modern leadership, we don't give any credit.
The only thing in terms of reviewing it, I think, you know, my idea would be every three years to review it. Every three years to look at it. I mean, I think five years would.
Seems reasonable.
Five years is too, too far.
And every year is too much.
I mean, the strategy plan is reviewed every year, so I think three years is fine.
Especially starting out in this.
You know, and it could be, you know, God forbid, you know, we have a Hurricane Michael coming through here, you know, and basically wiping out the system. If that were to happen, this payment is, is basically gone at that point.
I think it's correct.
Hurricane Michael comes through, you know, and wipes us, you know, does it demonstrate, you know, it's been, what, 25 years we've had hurricane here in Massachusetts? We gotta be, we gotta be due sometime, you know? So.
Tom, did you have any more to that?
No, but thank you.
Dave?
Is it correct that we, I just want to make sure that, because I think I've been saying this, that we're the largest payment in the state among municipalities? Okay, good, because it's in the minutes that we voted.
I think.
I said it last meeting. I thought it was correct.
You wanted to make sure it was the right.
It's good to just restate the backdrop, you know, is that it's the largest payment in the state, so it's worth noting.
Yeah, I agree with all the comments, and I think we have a good plan. I think what John and Phil suggested makes sense. I don't think, we don't have to vote because you guys have already agreeing to meet, right?
I think what we can do is maybe get a couple of spreadsheets laid out as we've got here, get the report by tomorrow, just cleaned up a little bit, and then we'll circulate it to everybody, obviously here as well as the subcommittee. That works for everyone.
Right, and we can get it to the whole cab too, obviously, right?
Of course, the cab, yeah, of course, the cab, that's what I meant, yeah.
Can I clarify the spreadsheet that I prepared?
Yes, I need just to walk through maybe one or two of the numbers here in terms of the implications of the spreadsheet.
And then if we could issue this maybe Monday morning as a final.
Monday morning would be good.
Monday morning to issue it as a final.
Does that work for you?
You don't mind working over the weekend, right? Oh, I forgot, this is a utility. It's only the line guys who are climbing the falls.
Does that work, Colleen, the Monday, what John's saying about?
You're talking about printing out the four modules, well, one's the, the six-year budget, and then there's three modules that we did. Is that what you're asking for?
No, no, I don't, I don't think the budget, I think the report, with the report was some minor corrections on it.
The study, yeah.
The study, and then these, the maybe two supporting scenarios that are the financials that look out going forward, what the implication of our recommendation is.
Okay.
That's, that's here. That's embedded in here. I mean, this is.
Is that by Monday?
Is that doable by Monday?
They're, they're done now, they're just.
Yeah, I just, I just want to double check what you want me, so there's, is the, the date correction, there's some little asterisks with some explanations saying that it's the previous year's sales that makes up for the calculation. I'm going to take it, should I take it down to the, to the metric of 3% and 2% to say because that's where you're leveling off?
Yeah, I think we want to go at least that far, right? We were saying go out at least six years.
Six years. I only go six years.
Yeah. So does that take us to the 25 or 26?
I wasn't going to redo every chart on present day to match today's budget, right?
No, no, no.
We're just leaving the data from.
None of that.
Right.
I'd suggest that we, we just have an offline discussion to make sure that we're all in agreement on the, on the spreadsheet, because it, that it reflects this, because I think it gives more information than just the one pager.
So I think it goes down to, I believe, if I'm correct, where it says CY 25, that actually should be CY 24.
Yeah, CY 24.
So I believe that.
And that's as low as we have to go.
That's the cutoff.
CY 24 is where we're stopping.
Yeah, but, excuse me, again, the only reason I, and you can separate it so you can focus on it, the, the story gets significantly better, as I said, you're going to average $80,000 more or less decrease each year. When you get to that cutoff point, it goes down to 18,000. So everyone knows it's a projection, but I'm just saying that's the benefit.
It goes, it levels off, is what you're saying.
Well, just look at, look at your numbers. It's, it's labeled CY 24, it's 1.9, then it goes to 1.871, then 1852, 1834.
It almost stops dropping.
Yeah, well, does it? Because what we, deliberately, because the CapEx is, is, at that point starts, I'm guessing that's part of the explanation, right, the capex? Whatever the.
No, because you're, you're transitioning from 3.5 to get down to what the metric is. I mean, typically.
Oh, you're bottoming, you're bottoming out.
He's saying.
Your metric for kilo, for mils per kilowatt hour is 2.5%.
He's saying to leave these in.
We're not saying 2.5, we're saying.
No, no. You can't, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
You just, you know, it's, it's too hard to predict that, what's going to happen after the six years.
I agree.
I mean, you're, you're going to ask, you know, if we're going to do that, then, you know, I'd ask Colleen to do the spreadsheet all, to cover all those years, and that's just too much work. That's too much to do.
If we don't know, nothing about that.
And we don't know, we don't know enough about that, we're, we're guessing.
Yeah, Tom, I think what you're saying.
I mean, I don't mean we're guessing, but we're guestimated.
Tom, just because what, what Colleen did was drop it slowly, it's like a gradual drop from 3.5 by 10 basis points down to three, that's the only reason that levels off, right?
Right, but, but, but the reality is, if this, all things being equal, which it's true for even a five-year look, the reality is the payments would, would decline at a much slower rate.
Well, well, don't forget.
Because the percentage stops dropping, yeah.
There are rate increases too, though, that are embedded in this.
But this is based on kilowatt hour sales.
Right.
So this is just saying that your kilowatt hour sales is going down by 1% per year. That may not happen. So this is a, this is what it looks like if it went down 1% every year. If it doesn't go down 1% every year, then your payment's going to be higher than what's here.
Right, but you know, I could make the argument in the, in the calendar year 2029, Amazon Three would move their headquarters here, you know?
Because of our load, like these costs.
You could say that about five years too.
I mean, you know, that's why I think the six-year plan is, is, you know, cut it off in six years would be the best thing to do.
I'm fine with that.
As well, the payment in the first column, because a note needs to be added, you know, what the town had asked was, you know, the CPI, if it's less than 2.5, it's a 2.5 floor to a 5% ceiling, okay? All this column does is add 2.5 every year, which wasn't asked for, it was just a scenario. It's like, so if we just increased it every year by CY 24 or whatever.
That's the left column. That's 2.5, right, right. That's the way it was, that's what it was been like.
The point was the convergence, and then, you know, the models that we did was to show more convergence.
Exactly, and the models that we have show that in the out years, in the six out years, you go negative. I mean, that was the point of the convergence, negative, right, dropping, and that's why I think it's important to show the, the level of data that's behind this, that, you know, it's, it's not just sort of numbers pick, there's a lot of data that you've used to substantiate what's here. And so I think six years is fine. I think having a few alternatives in terms of how you might use a metric for this, or a mils per kilowatt hour, and that's what we're sort of gravitating towards because it's, it's real, I mean, it's more tied to something. And I, I would also recommend we do not have a cap of like 5% on a CPI basis. I mean, if, if the CPI went up to, to five and the town would expect that, I mean, that aggravates this dramatically. I mean, it would really be dropping at twice the rate that we're seeing. So I think we just need to be careful about the recommendations.
Is, 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 I don't know this, is projecting a 2.5% increase for the next five years, is that reality?
You mean the CPI?
The CPI.
It looks like it's going to be higher than that. I think it already is.
Yeah, 2.5 is, is kind of what the Fed is going.
But I mean, beyond, just if anyone's projected.
No, the Fed is, is raising interest rates, so, and they anticipate they're going to enter a raise more next year.
Okay.
Unless the President Administration removes the ball.
If it doesn't, then we're sort of overstating what.
Yeah, well, that's true, yeah.
Well, it sounds like we have consensus, right? Sounds like we're good.
Can I, is there, am I sending this to John, one person to take a look at?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. You'd be the point, well, both of you guys.
You'll be the point man.
I'll be the point man. I'd like to reveal it with Phil.
Yeah, that's fine, no problem.
As well. And so by Monday morning, then we'll send it to the CAV members, everyone on the board, and the town.
Yeah. Colleen and I were just talking, just because, to make it fit in the presentation, some of the charts are a little bit of an eye chart, so I think that you could expand them so they're more readable for the, which I think would be helpful for everybody.
Sure.
All right.
Great, okay. Moving on. Oh, yes, Wendy.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
When do you want the information?
Oh, sometime tomorrow, yeah, and then perhaps I could send it to you, Phil, and we could.
You mean, you're not going to stay late and work tonight?
I, I worked all day on this. What do you mean, tonight?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to, taking that out of the way, by the way.
I know, it was very important. You're, you're part of the committee, so.
We, we did solve the leak problem.
Good, good. Did it pass?
Yes, it did.
Good.
It did.
All right, so we're going to our RMLD board meetings. It looks like the next one is November 15th. And the following one, December 20th. Any concerns, anybody?
We just took a quick look.
I have my Christmas party calendar, but.
November 15th.
Maybe a party in Holden that some of us may be invited to. This takes precedence, of course.
Okay. No, no concerns?
Well, I just, well, just a small one. On the November 15th one, is there any chance of moving it to either the, well, Monday is Veterans Day, Tuesday, Tuesday or Wednesday, is there any chance of?
All those dates are fine with me.
Tuesday, I'm, I'll be away.
I can't do Wednesday.
Can't do Wednesday.
The cab meets on Wednesday?
Ah.
Is that here?
You want to do the, can we do the following Monday?
The 19th?
Yeah, what's the 19th look like?
19th is fine.
The 19th?
19th works for me. How about you guys?
Looking.
Colleen?
All right, 19th.
Tracy, does that work? All right, 19th it is.
The subcommittee meets on Tuesday. What time is it, that meeting going to start, Tracy? We starting at 5:30? Okay. It's an open meeting, so any commissioner who wants to come can come.
And that is at the, it's right here?
It's right here, yeah.
Tuesday at what time?
It's at 5:30.
5:30.
Do you have a conference room?
Yeah.
Okay.
And our 19th meeting's the normal 7:30 start, right?
Yeah.
November 19th. And then December 20th, how's that look for everybody?
That's fine with me.
December 20th?
It looks like it could be a, it's getting very Christmas party around then.
Yeah, right.
I think I mentioned that in.
Yeah.
December 20th, yeah.
I can wait until before. I can't. I got a Christmas party tonight. What do you guys, should we just leave it?
I think leave it.
You want, you want to do the 13th, the week before?
13th?
It's the 13th.
No, that's the one I can't do. I can't do the 13th.
That puts the November and December meetings pretty close together too.
All right, you want to just leave it for the 20th for now? We can talk about it in November.
Yeah.
I have a feeling things might show up on people's calendars for that time.
You're going to do a meeting those.
All right, okay.
Jane, will you be there at these meetings?
I'm supposed to say, yeah, I put them in there. Well, they're public meetings, I mean, sure.
This is how we do it in Holden, just saying.
And then the cab dates, we have November 18th, or November, we don't have a date